Good evening, can I have everyone come and take a seat if they plan to be here for the meeting? Good evening.
Is Janet doing the invocation? Is Janet doing her invocation?
Oh, no.
You're not?
No.
Oh.
Do you have an invocation?
No. No, does anybody have an invocation?
No.
Alright. Okay, come on in, have a seat, I hope there's enough seats for everyone. There are probably more chairs over there around the table, around the corner. Good evening, I'd like to welcome you all to this February 25th meeting of the Northfield Township Board of Trustees. Please stand for the invocation and pledge. Dear God, we ask your wisdom and your presence with us tonight as we deliberate about the business of the township. We ask you to help us all to provide respect for each other and give us all safe drives home tonight as it's over. Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic of America stands one nation under God and with all the glory of the Lord.
Please call the role Clerk Manley.
Chick.
Here.
Otto.
Present.
Docket.
Present.
Manley, here.
Chocly.
Here.
And Bellinger is absent with notice.
Okay. Now we have an opportunity for call to the public, anyone who's here would like to come and speak to us at this time. Feel free to come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and direct your comments to the chair. If anyone is here for the public hearing and would like to speak at this time in the call to the public instead of the other time, no, no. If everyone is here for the public hearing and they would like to speak to that, please hold your comments for that time. And just anyone who would like to address us for anything else at this time. We're having a, it's on, it's on the agenda.
But, but she-
It's a public hearing to re-
Yeah, they need to know.
Yes.
They don't have to wait.
Yeah, the public hear, you don't have to wait, but the public hearing is to consider removal of Samaya Quinto from the Northfield Township Planning Commission. Okay, thank you.
Mike Chikala, 7789 Sutton Road. I really appreciate everybody turning out and the board listening to some of these comments. I did make some comments last time about the fact that we need to have revenue bonds instead of general obligation bond. The fact that we would even consider a deal with a builder who dictates how we spend the money that we receive. It's kinda like me selling, you're selling your house to me and I tell you, well, you gotta take 50% of it and buy bonds from me. There makes no sense whatsoever that that would even be considered. And we came dangerously close to you guys passing that. I do hope you establish a task force and involve the community, do a little bit more on the planning for the downtown area, and that it becomes mixed use and not all housing. And as we've said, and I've said over and over again, the cost of studies, the cost of use studies that go around the country and close to home in Syo Township, for every house we build, for every dollar tax revenue it generates is cost, in Syo, costs a dollar thirty-three cents. So housing doesn't generate money, I don't know where people come up with that. That's why Ann Arbor is annexing communities around it and taking township property, because they need money. And I suggest that it becomes, what it was designed, excuse me, a mixed use project, and that we open up and get some input from MDOT and the road commission if there's a possibility of rerouting Main Street, because the only way there's gonna be a beach that's meaningful and safe is not to have Main Street run around right next to the lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Jessica Meisner, 8176 Fair Oak Drive. I did have some questions I would, hoping would be included in the town hall meeting. I understand if I email them that they can be, there are probably a number that didn't get in there. But I, there's one in particular about the wastewater treatment plant that I'd just like to pull out of that. I did review the documentation, I appreciate very much the trustee sharing that documentation and research with us about the wastewater treatment plant. One thought on it, one question about it, among others. On May, pardon me, March 22nd, 2016, Tetra Tech reported, and this was mentioned in the town, just in the town hall meeting just now, that there are three segments, the three segments from the wastewater treatment plant, 2-8 Mile is one of them, that's going to need, it's not at capacity yet, but at least in 2016 was going to need to be upgraded. And then the two segments immediately upstream of the 8 Mile station are already at capacity. This was mentioned, you guys are all familiar. That rapport was basing capacity, basing flow on peak flow level, that includes wet weather flows. So, and those wet weather flows, as you could see in the document, are somewhere around three times as high as the daily average flow. So that wet weather flow makes a big difference to the necessary capacity for those pipelines. The two that are already at capacity, the total of that project was estimated in 2016 at 1.95 million dollars. The third that isn't quite needed yet, but will be, that goes from 8 Mile to the wastewater treatment plant, is estimated at $730,000, this is according to Tetra Tech. There was one EPA report granted dated 1974 with recommendations on flow equalization included in that research. And it does state, it says, "It is sometimes desirable to locate the equalization basin at strategic locations within the collection system. This offers the added advantage of economically relieving trunk sewer overflow during peak flow periods." I would ask the board, is it possible that placing this storage tank upstream of those three segments that are at capacity due to wet weather flow, according to Tetra Tech's estimation, those three projects are a total of 2.68 million. So it seems worth at least asking Tetra Tech, if the tank were placed upstream of those, would that save the township from those three projects? Thank you very much.
Anne Hunter, can you hear me? Good. 8176 Fair Oaks Drive. I just want to be clear first of all, that I do not want to pollute our waterways. And I do recognize that the wastewater treatment plant needs to do something to improve, not only just for the wet weather events, but also to improve. I know you have a deadline with Eagle, but you could just tell them, we have taken these steps. They aren't asking for the solution to be done. So what I really want to say is that if you tonight decide to pass number four and put the letter, the publication of intent out there about the bonds, I think you're acting prematurely. You don't know whether you want general or revenue. The Green Oak Township has questions for you, that are some of the same questions we have. I think if you pass this tonight, it's premature. You did answer some of my basic questions about who's paying for this in the town hall. So, I know that I've heard a lot of people say, well, we've been doing this for 30 years, but that's not a good reason to do it badly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Ken Dignan, 9210 Hillcrest Drive, Whitmore Lake. Oh, the variety of issues, what I can address. On the equalization basin, the one thing I will say is, as an individual who owns multiple properties on the sewer system, I understand there is a, there is a minor increase in cost to do revenue bonds, but I think it's only right that you do revenue bonds. You know, the revenue of the, you know, we're talking less than one dollar per month difference, that's it, less than a dollar. I think it's what you do as, what's right for those not on the sewer system, and it's right for those that are on the sewer system to step up and, you know, we have an obligation to cover that. There were some questions in regards to parks earlier. One thing I do want to address is, you know, there's a 30 acre park in the Hamlet. It is a school-owned property off Jennings Road. We have a dog, you guys have a dog park there, that through a mutual agreement with the school is operated. There's a walking track there, there's a wonderful, wonderful play structure there with benches around it and such. And the kind folks of the Whitmore Lake School District voted to tax themselves additional monies to add additional facilities throughout that property over the next several years. That's a park that gets rarely used by the public, very rarely. The dog park is popular among the three or four dozen people that do use it. But, you know, the school district, I will tell you, on average, if you take a five-year average, spends about $50,000 a year to maintain that park, okay? But, that doesn't come out of your tax dollars, that $50,000 is paid for by individuals who rent the property from us and cover the costs of it over the years. So when you, when you take a look at park property, it's important that you consider the costs. One thing I will say is, when you put out an RFP, when no one responds to your RFP with what you're asking for, what you're asking for is unrealistic, period, that's it. And if those that respond come back with something completely different, that's gotta tell you something. You've gotta look at it and go, okay, then what is realistic? How do we work at a plan that, you know, can be something that addresses some of those concerns? Maybe the RFP was too expensive.
10 seconds, Mr. Dignan.
The RFP was too expensive, no one could develop it that way. But if you have a developer that's coming to the table and talking to you, engage them, engage them with the community, and see if they'll work with you. If they won't, you know, you're gonna have to come to some conclusion with it. Thank you, appreciate it.
Hi, Sue Shank, 600 West Joy Road. I have two issues tonight. One is, the Washtenaw County Conservation District has a tree and plant sale every spring. The deadline for the orders is March 20th, I have flyers here. And if you are interested, you could Google Washtenaw County Conservation District or go to www.washtenawcd.org, they're an excellent price and excellent quality. The other thing, I want to talk about the North Village Plan from a resident's point of view. I noticed at the town hall that there were people from the rural area and from the urban area here tonight, and we raised our hands at the same time, we were in agreement. And a lot of what the agreement was about is that the people support basically the North Village Plan. And it reminded me of the Biltmore situation, which was a really unpleasant time in our history and a really unpleasant time in my life, I had ulcers so bad I could hardly stand up some days. It was, it was unpleasant, because the people did not trust that the government would follow the process that we had gone through to create the master plan. And once the government decided and committed to following the plan, the commotion died down. And I believe that people support the North Village Plan, maybe some tweaks, right? So maybe not everything happens, but the basic gist of it, the people support the process, which you've been a huge part of, the people support you continuing on with the process, but not as just sort of like, we made this plan and it's not gonna work, so we're gonna do whatever the developer wants, but hold the developer to the plan. We deserve, we deserve that belief in our community and in the plan that our community came to collectively. And to me, I see this as a huge thing to unite our community. And that's something that as a resident, I really want to see, and I really want to see mixed use drawing me into the town. I don't have access to a lake, right? So that's pretty exciting for me, and if I come and I get to use the lake, I want to spend money here. So, thank you for considering all our input tonight, and we'll see where it goes. The other thing I want to thoroughly encourage you to do is get an appraisal before you sell that property. Our residents deserve us to know, and the developer to pay a fair price for that property, thank you.
Thank you. Pardon?
Yeah, she just took off, yeah.
Margaret Redell, 65141 West 8 Mile Road. When I raised my hand when everybody else did, it was because I wanted input from all the people to get to this board. I come up here pretty frequently, and there's been a few of us that have questioned the development of the park next to the post office. We'd like to see it a park, that's what it was intended for to begin with, this way I understand it. It was dedicated as a park, Howard Fink was out there with his park sign. And now all of a sudden, we've got 90 houses. And even though it has been brought to the attention of the board a number of times by myself, by David Gordon, by a number of other people, it doesn't seem to go anywhere. So I really hope that people out here will let this board know, if you want a park, if you don't want 90 houses that are going- you know what, the subdivision next to the school did not bring everybody to beautiful downtown Whitmore Lake. The apartments don't bring anybody much to beautiful downtown Whitmore Lake. I don't see how 90 houses crammed into that little park spot are gonna bring a lot of people. And I guess that's all I got tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Lee Cole.
Thanks.
9062 Pine Cove Drive. I haven't been involved in politics in this area since I moved here from Genesee County. Before that, though, I was on the staff for Garland Lane, Senator, State Senate. I was also on Don Meele's first campaign and Bill Millican's last. So I know a little bit about politics. So I'm here today just to inquire a little bit and also to make a statement about Sam. I only know Sam based on the time that I've been with him for the Park and Recreation Board. While he's been on that board with me, or I with him, he has been a pretty exemplary leader and chairperson of that committee. That committee, that board is a little bit like trying to guide wild cats. We sometimes get off topic, sometimes we need a firm hand, sometimes we need someone that knows what a democracy is and let us talk. He's been a gentleman, he has shared power. I don't have any reservations about recommending him for any position that's voluntary in this community. I also have some doubts, based on my personal experience in politics, as to the timeline and the way the matter of his continuance or rejection of the planning committee was done. I'm pretty disappointed in that. That's my statement, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton Road. Jim Nelson, 7777 Sutton Road. I'd like to thank Ken Dignan for telling us how much it costs to run a park, $50,000 a year. We've been lacking that detail for a long time, we heard scare numbers from Jackie Otto, she said three and a half million. And another thing I think everyone in this room should know is, despite the assurances of the board members and supervisor and even Kathy Manley, our clerk, this deal is well in process. At the last meeting, 2/11, February 11th, the manager and the township attorney and the planner were instructed to begin negotiations with Livonia Builders to sell the whole thing for $765,000, sell the property. And part of that deal, the way they wrote it was, we had to spend half that money to build, to build the park ourselves. So the net was only around $382,250 bucks, that's an incredibly stupid deal. But the real point is that these guys have jumped on motions to sell this property repeatedly. And I don't know why they think they can deny it, it's all there in black and white on the video. You can look at the live timelines on the northfieldneighbors todays website. You don't have to watch most of the meeting because they're incredibly boring, but you can watch the motions being made, Ton Bellinger's made them. She was ready to write a deal, she was ready to make a contract, and our attorney stopped them. Thank God somebody had some rationality. This deal is in process, no matter what they say. They're trying to plunge ahead, they're trying to get something done, they're not putting the needs of the community ahead of their own political ambitions, and I think that's the problem, the root cause. Anyway, this deal is going forward unless you guys stop it. And I'll have something nice to say about Sam I Quinto when this farce begins.
Thank you.
Udo Hof, 6431 Whitmore Lake Road. We heard a bit the history about how the numbers came together for the sewer expansion, and I again would like to ask, why is, are we going just with a house company, Tetra Tech, without any other quote on the expansion for the sewer, so that we really can define and select the best and also the best prices for this? And the numbers, historically already, are they going to be updated? Or are we going to hit again with an extra cost, like, oops, I think we forgot something here? Just wanted to make sure that you know about that, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Are you coming up?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Stretch them out.
Okay, thank you.
Fall some more.
Alright. Okay, I'm not seeing anybody else, we'll move, we'll move on, oh, here we have another one.
Brian Trim, 254 Lakeview. I wanted to thank the board for its town hall meeting tonight, and also for all of the hard work that you've put into this project and all of the options for North Village over the past years. I also want to applaud what I feel is a willingness to reconsider some of the options and the directions that we were taking. My feeling is, that's a proper route to take. I'm a firm believer that we can have our cake and eat it too. I do not see Whitmore Lake as a second-class citizen, but rather as a rich diamond in the rough that is replete with opportunity and potential. I personally support the residential plan for Livonia Builders, only not in that particular location. I think there are other locations within Northfield Township where residential development of that type would be prudent. And we need to consider our tax base, our school system, but that particular site, as many people have pointed out, is the last available site wherein you can have a symbiotic relationship with the Main Street corridor, with the greatest resource we have, which is the lake, and create a destination magnet for not only our local township residents, but also tourism. So I do applaud the willingness on part of the board to continue discussion. I know it's been a long time in the coming, but good things come to people who- I know it's been a long time in the coming, but good things come to people who wait and work diligently. And if I had a nickel for every time I was told that we cannot accomplish something, I'd be able to buy the property myself and give it to you all. But I think it's a good direction that we're taking and I truly hope that we'll continue in that vein. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Coming up now. Okay.
Craig Warburton, 450 West Joy Road. Sorry about the false alarm there. I really just want to say something about the issue with Sam and the process that evidently took place behind closed doors. It's been no secret that I have issues with the way this board functions across the last several months. I see one of the reefer three aren't here today, so I'll leave some of that alone. But I've had issues with the word "conflict of interest" for a while with this board. And the Michigan Township Association makes great definitions of what a conflict of interest is, and it's not just pecuniary. I had serious issues and serious doubts and serious concerns for the conflicts of interest that took place with Madam Clerk, Madam Supervisor, and the missing trustee Dawn in respect to the marijuana vote and what took place with the petitions and legal services and that whole question. I didn't hear any preliminary conversation amongst the board about Sam crossing a line or committing a conflict of interest. As I understand it, and these laws changed not so long ago, the board approved Sam. You appointed him, but the board at all approved him. It would seem to me that the process would involve first some conversation amongst the board to establish that there are charges. This is looking a lot like a monarchy suddenly, and it's a little upsetting. We're in a conundrum of decision-making where no one seems to be very happy and everyone's accusing everyone else of changing direction midstream. And it's a little hard to figure out where the start button is and where the stop button is. But, you know, I've been around the Planning Commission for a number of years. I don't know Sam personally at all. I know he represents a significant business on the lake. He's a significant part of the recreation on the lake. I've watched him vote and carry on at the Planning Commission with utmost integrity. And I think it's a shame to usurp the process and publish a public hearing to remove him without so much as a preamble to precede it, some reference that this board endorses that decision. Suddenly, he's on trial. It's just a point of order. Thanks so much for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move on to board member response to call to the public. So, do any board members want to say anything concerning what we've heard from the public at this time? Mr. Dockett?
Yes, the ones that spoke against going in business with the developer, letting them write the contracts. If we're going to sell something, we should be selling. We should be doing the contract, not them. So, I want to know, everybody that spoke against it, I agree with them. I don't think we should sell any Northfield Township property of that size. I'm not talking about these little lots that are old lots that are 40-foot wide or 30-foot wide, but any large pieces, I don't believe we should sell. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Zelnok, go ahead.
So, first, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out and to the town hall meeting. Appreciate everybody's input. So, if we look at our minutes on February 11th, in regards to the property, it says, "Bellinger moved, check second, that the township manager work with the township attorney to review the current offer from Livonia Builders and bring back to the board recommendations for proceeding." So, as it has been indicated, it's moving fast. So, there was a gentleman that said we should have a separate meeting to talk about this item. So, my question to the board is, when should we have that meeting and how shall we publicize it? Is one week sufficient? Is two weeks, three weeks? What would work to be able to get good publication to our people as well as to have good attendance to discuss this?
If we mail to everyone in the township, we need to come up with the funds, the processing time, and the mailing time. So, we're looking probably a month out.
Postcards are cheap.
Yeah, so we could do that.
And the board has to approve the cost for the postcards, too.
Right. We could get that. So, is that our thought is that a month on a separate day, like on a Tuesday that we don't meet?
I think that was the recommendation so that there would be at least two hours dedicated to the forum. I think, too, the gentleman also did stress is that you have this on a quarterly basis instead of tying it to a meeting. And I think that that is very important, that we don't tie it to a meeting because people were wanting... We spent probably a good 40 minutes on one topic and there were other, just as valuable questions that needed to be answered that were squeezed into 20 minutes. So, I think that it is very advisable... I mean, they're giving us a directive. They want these meetings. They want the forum. They want the opportunity to talk. And this is a good forum for them to converse and we need to give them that time. But I think monthly tied to a board meeting, it's not going to work.
Ms. Manley?
Just looking at dates, so the 17th and the 31st are our meetings because the 10th is the election, right?
Correct.
So, that would be maybe the 24th.
I particularly like to push it off further than that so we can get some good concept plans for people to react to rather than just wide open, you know?
So, I guess I'm looking that... I mean, we do have a motion on the board that was approved five to two. So, I just want to ensure that we have this meeting before this motion continues to go into a depth where it's not going, you know, it's going to spend time and money.
Well, the one thing about the motion was to just come up with a draft. It wasn't... And it wasn't anything about starting... It did say, "Start the negotiation process," but that process can go on for three, four months.
April 7th. Can I speak?
Yes, please.
Okay. Yeah, the motion actually, I don't think it meant that when it came back toward or back to the board that there was going to be a decision. It was a recommendation on how to proceed. That doesn't mean negotiation. That means, okay, what do we want to do now? So, moving forward, what do we want to do now? I have no problem with that motion. As far as noticing people to come out and speak, can we be specific about exactly what we're talking about? About creating a new plan, creating or going by the synthesis plan, adjusting the plan that we have? What is the purpose of the meeting that we want people to address?
That's a good idea. And really, that was the specific request.
We want them to address what they want to address, not what we want them to do.
So, in this meeting, personally, I think we should take them through the synthesis plan and how we got there, the North Village. And then I think we should show them the current plan from the Livonia Builders and get their input and say, "Here's how we are." And I think we, as the gentleman said, we need more... They want to input more on that.
I also think we should... Everybody should have a copy or have access to the North Village plan so they can see all the concept plans that were proposed.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that. I think it's important that we do gather some public input, but it was... It is our master plan and that was adopted. And so, it did go through the correct process to be our master plan. However, I think negotiations could be done that would improve the plan and, I mean, would improve what we got from the developers. The original intention was to have a master developer who could do that entire site the way it was intended. We didn't end up with that. So, I'm fine with stepping back a bit and going ahead and negotiating and then finding out if we can find another developer who could do the job as it was intended to be done. And we potentially have some developers out there who could do that for us. But I would like to not... I would like to not jump into something before we are ready. And that's what happens to us. We try to rush into something. So, I'm thinking one month out is probably not enough time to get some other concepts for people to react to, but maybe six weeks. So, that's my recommendation. And mailing is a fine thing to do.
So, six weeks out would be anywhere from April 7th or April 24th.
So, let's make a motion to have a...
Just a minute, let's have more discussion here.
Go ahead.
They want us to do something. It's just a start. We don't need to wait six weeks or two months. Why? It needs to start. So, why do we have to be all prepared for six, eight weeks? I don't get it. I think we should start as soon as possible.
I think it's helpful to have something for people to react to. I think there's a lot of good ideas out there that we haven't even heard of. We went to a great meeting, Lenore and I, with the Parks and Rec, and we heard a lot of good input. And that's where I don't think we should put together a half program for the public so that we're wasting their time. I think it'd be helpful to have some really good recommendations for that.
So, the two dates would probably be the 24th of March and then April 7th. I'd say the 7th and that way we can communicate and put something together. So, I'll make a motion that we have a town hall meeting on April 7th at 7:00 PM, in particular to discuss the North Village plan.
I'll support it.
HLC meets on the 7th.
On a Tuesday? We get priorities.
It's in our... So, we're good, so...
They can all be at a meeting.
I didn't hear what happened.
So, we made a motion to have a meeting on April 7th.
I didn't hear.
Oh, the Whitmore Lake Corporation, no, Horseshoe Lake. Sorry, Horseshoe Lake Corporation meets here on Tuesdays on that date.
We'll kick them out.
Or maybe they'll change their meeting.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Zelnok. Do we have a support?
I support it.
Support by Ms. Otto to have a town hall meeting 7:00 PM on April 7th, 2020, here concerning the North Village site.
What time?
7:00 PM. That way, we don't get too confused.
Right. Okay. Any more comments on that? Ms. Chick?
So, again, we have a master plan. We have a synthesis plan that is part of the master plan. We've been through the visioning sessions. We have... I guess I'm wondering, is the purpose of this town hall specific to North Village? Are we going to rearrange or change the master plan to... I mean, we have a really bad habit of going over the same issues over and over and over again and then nothing happens. So, what is the purpose of the meeting?
I think it's a great opportunity to explain to the public how the plan got put together, how it got adopted, and then what the current options are moving into the future, like what the intention was as far as how much park...
But we're not looking to change the master plan or the synthesis plan.
That would be a whole thing that goes through the Planning Commission. So, but right now, it would be great to get public input to some concept plans, you know, provided by some developers to react to and to see if there's any... if there's interest.
Where do we get the plans from the developers from, other than those that we already have?
We may have another one and I think we might as well ask. I would like to get a concept plan from an architect for the park area. So, I wanted to go out six weeks so we would have some time to ask some questions.
I don't mind hearing from the people. I love hearing from the people. But we've been doing this for three years.
I agree. It's been a long time.
So, if I may have the floor back?
Yep.
So, my understanding, though, is, and my concern as one board member, is it doesn't look anything to me like I agreed to when I voted for the North Village plan. So, I think the people are saying, "Wait a minute, let's talk about it." And I'm not saying we're changing it. I'm just saying maybe we should just put it in place and accept it and don't accept things that are less and that much less. So, I think the people are now saying, "We want to hear more about it." So, as board member, I think it's important because this is a forever decision. Once we go forward, once we sign a contract, we are in it till probably, certainly till I die. So, that's why I think it's important to have that meeting and I think April 7th will give us time to broadcast it. There was a comment on broadcasting is maybe we start doing like lawn signs. You know, have lawn signs or a banner over the... We could get a banner and put it over Main Street and say, "Hey, we have a public meeting on North Village. Come to it."
Would it be any different than what we do with Kiwanis or any of the other events?
Yeah, and I know Ms. Drains has authority to, you know, approve something under $5,000. So, maybe we could get a banner that says, "Come talk North Village." And maybe that's a mode of operation that we go forward on major topics.
If we get a crowd like this, we better move it up to that park to have the meeting.
Yeah, so I have one more comment, Madam Chair. Is taxes were due on February 14th without interest and penalty. We are...
We didn't vote on your motion yet.
Oh, sorry. I thought we did.
No.
Sorry, Madam Chair. You can...
Okay, we should vote on the motion to have a town hall. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you. We will have a town hall. Maybe we can have a junior banner. Yeah.
And we got the dates down, right?
Yep, April 7th. Okay. So, I do, taxes were due on February 14th without interest and penalty. We will be accepting the taxes at the township office until March 2nd, but interest and penalty will be applied after March 2nd. We legally have to turn the tax roll over to the county and any taxes at that point in time will need to be paid at the county and they add more interest and penalty on that. So, if anybody has any outstanding taxes, please get it to us as soon as you can. We do have a drop box. I highly recommend you use that. It's there 24/7 and we pick that up on a daily basis. Sometimes you can't always trust the mail, not that I want to say anything offense my federal government in that regards, but we have... I would recommend if you're getting close, put it in the drop box or come see us personally. We're friendly.
Thank you. Ms. Otto?
Okay, I just wanted to give an update in regards to... There was a public hearing on February 20th at the Green Oak Township Building. It was the Green Oak Township Public Hearing in regards to the Equalization Basin. There were three areas that came out of it that were of concern. One is regarding the placement of the basin itself. The other was the concern of the color of the basin because of where it's located, it would be near residential area. And the other concern is the wooded area being removed. Where the basin is located at, they would like to keep all that wooded area. So, those are things that were under consideration for that hearing.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
I just wanted to piggyback on Ms. Otto's comments about the Green Oak Public Hearing. They also very concerned about their residential street. Is it Fair Oak? Yes, being used by anyone if the construction goes forward in that area. So, they want to be guaranteed that that's not going to happen.
Okay.
Yeah, that's an easy guarantee because I don't think we could get more than a backhoe down through there anyway. It's just an emergency exit for us in case something happens along our drive.
Yeah, but I don't even think they want you to use that emergency... Yeah, but I don't even think they want you to use that emergency exit area.
No, it will not be used for any construction equipment.
Is that a public, is that a public road?
It's a private road.
It was never, it was never intended to be used for anything other than for us to get a truck out in an emergency.
Okay.
Okay.
Would you, would you answer my question? Is it, is it a public road?
Fair Oak is a private road, Mr. Docket.
It is a private road.
It's a private road.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any more comments in response to the comments we heard? Okay, let's move on. I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda as distributed. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Manley. Do we have any comments or any need to pull any of these out? Mr. Docket?
Yes. Number one.
Okay, Madam Chair, report.
The Madam Chair's report, third bullet point. Third bullet point says that they have the building department, building committee that went to the Green Oak Township and checked out their building department, which they're in a different county and they're in a different township than ours. I don't know why they went there. And they have a, a different kind of township there. But we've been talking about trying to do something with the building department for a year. I've been trying to get it to put on the agenda so we can vote on it. But for one year, that is not. And we're losing $50,000 a year in the building department. $5,000 every month. The building department costs us more to run than what we get. And we're sitting here for a year and finally they, they went over and attended these meetings at these other. So I'd like to know, when are we gonna get this on the agenda for us to vote on this?
Okay.
Mr. Manager.
Any member of the board can bring an item up and ask the board to put it on the agenda. This committee is composed of three board members and then I provide some assistance to them. And the members of that committee looked at other communities and asked that we arrange appointments to go to those two specific ones. Webster Township was because they are in county and they use the county building department. And that's what you've been talking about you want to do. And in Green Oak's case, they have their own building department, but they also, I believe, use some with county. But primarily, it's their in-house. But, you know, that's the thing. The board has appointed many committees recently, but you put three members of the board on it and any of those can bring back any of the issues from the different committees.
Well, why hasn't it been on our, why doesn't it get on? I've asked for it. I've asked for it. It never gets on. That's my question. You didn't answer my question.
Well, prior to this, I had it on the agenda several times back in the spring and early summer. If you recall, that was when the board was spending most of your effort towards the marijuana issue. And the board continued to table the issue because it was of not a high priority. So it's now been brought back at the request of another board member in the committee who was set up, and that's why they've been meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. And when, when might it get put back on? You got any ideas?
I mean, the board can put it on for the next meeting, but it's up to you all, not me.
Ms. Zelnak and Ms. Bellinger and I are on the, the building committee. And we're in the middle of doing work trying to find out how to alleviate that deficit. But we're not done with our study yet, so.
But, but it's been a year or more.
No, we haven't been working on it for a year.
We haven't been working on it for a year.
No, no, we've, we've been looking at this for a year.
Sure.
Not your study.
No.
And we're losing 10, you know, we're, we're losing $5,000 every week.
I agree. Yeah, Mr. We have, anybody can put it on the agenda.
I would think this would be the most important thing that we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll step down. You can join the committee if you'd like.
They wouldn't want me on there.
Oh, don't be so sure about that.
All right, so we have a motion to accept the consent agenda. Any more comments?
Shame on you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes 6-0. I'd like to make a motion to add a purchase offer for 75 Barker for consideration from Rob Munger after item five. And do I have a second for that? Nobody wants to add an agenda item tonight? Too long? All right. I will make a motion to have a special meeting on March 3rd then to deal with this.
I'll support that.
Purchase offer, okay.
But I'd like to have, go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Zelnak, to have a special meeting on the purchase offer. Ms. Otto.
The one question would be, will there be an appraisal of the building itself by March 3rd?
We have the restricted appraisal. Is that not good enough?
Well, the restrictive appraisal, the one that is as is, includes the land with it.
Right, right.
So this board has to determine if that is market value if you take the, if you just sell the building. I know the E, if we're gonna do it by the parking lot as an easement, we would have, and that easement does go with the building. If it's ever sold, you'd have to determine if that's adequate enough. So I'm just asking because we as a board are required to sell property at market value.
Okay, we can find that information out. I don't know if we can get a full-blown appraisal though in a week.
You needed a writing.
Right. You know, but the restricted appraisal is, I would think, pretty darn good. I've read through it. And-
It was pretty extensive.
I don't know. Mr. Aines?
I had contacted the appraiser who did the prior study. Originally, he hadn't called me back, but then I got through to him yesterday. And he thinks he can do something fairly quickly, but it won't be the full-blown. It'll be an add-in to what he's giving you for that.
Well, why is it better?
Well-
Yeah, that's good.
I mean, the only thing you're looking at, as far as I know, that's different is you had it evaluated based on if the building was torn down, what the vacant land would be. If the building was fixed up to code, what it would be valued at. And the third one was as-is. And so when the board approved putting it out for sale as-is, that's what the, the pricing by the board was established on that plus some additional requests. Now what he's going to be looking at is if you take the parking lot in some form, either through keeping that area and splitting the lot and keeping the parking lot as township-owned, what effect does that have on his valuation of the building as-is? And if you decide to do it in the form of selling it but keeping an easement, that's very similar. So he seemed to think he would be able to give back to me soon. He hoped to have gotten back to me before tonight's meeting, but I didn't hear from him.
Okay, well, all right.
I would like to add to that. Those appraisals are about a year and a half old, too.
November of 2018.
18, yep.
Right. I can't imagine they're a whole lot different, but except now we have marijuana businesses that are pumping up prices. That, but that's a, that's a decision by this board on whether they would want to sell it to a company that's gonna put a marijuana retail establishment in there. So.
Over here.
Yeah. Mr. Docket?
Well, first of all, we've got a, I think we have a bid for 275,000 from somebody that wasn't going to put marijuana in there. Is that correct? And, and how, this is the craziest idea ever. You want to have a meeting to sell this to this guy for 100,000. We're gonna have to pay, out of 100,000, we're gonna have to pay the, the, I just got it listed. We don't know how much that's gonna be. I mean, how can you be so silly as to do this? If we're going to change it from as-is, then we put it back out for, with the realtor to get as much money as possible for the people. We don't sell it to somebody who wants it for 100,000. I mean, how in, how in the world can you have a meeting? You said you want to talk about selling it.
Yeah.
Well-
On, on March 3rd.
Do you think that we, it's fair for us to sell this? This guy wants to write a contract for us. He's, he's telling us what he's gonna give us. We're not telling him what we want for it. And we're gonna sell it for 100,000 and we're gonna pick up, it says in the contract, that we have to pay the, the realtor. And I don't have any idea how much that is. When it was 285,000, it was like 30 grand that we're gonna have to pay.
It's 6%.
Well-
It's 6%.
Well, I, for one board member, we should put it back out for sale and, and advertise it and sell it to the highest bidder, not give it to somebody for, because they want it.
Well, we can talk about our options at the next meeting, provided we can have a meeting.
Yep, so I do have one. As Mr. Docket has indicated, we did have an offer for 275,000. And I think they had indicated in their offer that they would let us use or ease it. So I'd like to contact them to see as well.
If they're still interested.
If they're still interested in what their plans were as well and have that available.
I did, I did talk to the Realtor today. And one, one of them is still interested in. And the other two were only interested if they could have a marijuana establishment there.
So if you can bring that information back for this meeting, I think that would be pertinent.
Does this, this board think that-
We should have Mr. Aines bring it back to this meeting.
Sure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does the rest of the board think that we should sell, we should sell this building without getting anybody interested in, in giving us bids, without advertising it? Do you guys think we should sell it?
Unclear at this point. That's why we're gonna have the meeting.
Right.
And then I have a request for Mr. Fink as well. So it's been brought up that we are obligated to sell it at fair market value or, and if you could bring, you don't have to give us an answer now, but they had opinion on that.
First, I won't be here. I will be in Mexico with Mrs. Fink. And as much as I enjoy all of you, I'm not coming to the board meeting next week.
Mexico seems to be a popular place.
How about if we come with you?
We'll send one of the smarter Finks to attend the meeting. I've looked into this a little bit, and there's no statute that says it has to be fair market value. There is a constitutional provision about giving the credit of the state and political subdivisions of the state. And that's why you can't just give away surplus property. You have to get some value for it. So it is possible that the township could determine that the value of a particular development with things that are not necessarily financial value are of greater benefit to the township than another offer. So you don't necessarily have to take the highest price. But the value you receive, when you consider everything, should be reasonably related to the value of the property and to the, and the benefit of the township.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Chockley, support by Zelnak, to have a special meeting to discuss the purchase offer on 75 Barker.
Not to discuss the purchase order? No.
Well, and we may-
No, no, no. Not to discuss, not to discuss the purchase order.
What do you want it to say?
Well, I think you better talk about it first.
We're, we're gonna talk it-
I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're gonna, are we gonna bid? Are we gonna vote on letting someone purchase it on that?
No, we're gonna have a special meeting to actually talk about it unless you want us to do it in secret. And no, that's not a good idea. Okay? So March 3rd, okay. I guess we'll probably need a roll call vote to have a meeting on March 3rd.
You better believe it.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Is this just to talk about a offer or all offers?
All offers.
I would prefer all offers.
All offers, right.
That was my, you know, if anybody still wants it, we need to talk about them all. Not just a single offer. Thank you, Ms. Chick.
Right. Okay, roll call. Chick?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Zelnak?
Yes.
Docket?
I don't think we should sell any township property, no.
Okay. That passed 5-1. Thank you. Okay, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as distributed.
Support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Manley. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Thank you. That passes 6-0. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing to consider the removal of Sam Iaquinto from the Northfield Township Planning Commission due to alleged malfeasance. And we have an opportunity for anyone who would like to come and speak at this time. But I would like to, since I don't know if all of you are familiar with the actual notice of charges, I'd like to read that. Pursuant to MCL 125.38159, the township board may remove a member of the planning commission for misfeasance, malfeasance, or non-feasance in office upon written charges and after a public hearing. The reason for recommending removal from office is malfeasance. It is alleged that Mr. Iaquinto failed to disclose a potential conflict of interest to the planning commission. Specifically, it is alleged that after entering into an agreement regarding real estate that he owned, he voted on matters affecting that real estate to ensure that marijuana establishments would be permitted there. So state law is pursuant to MCL 125.38159, before casting a vote on a matter on which a member may reasonably be considered to have a conflict of interest, the member shall disclose potential conflict of interest to the planning commission. The member is disqualified from voting on the matter if so provided by the bylaws or by a majority vote of the remaining members of the planning commission. Failure of a member to disclose a potential conflict of interest as required by this subsection constitutes malfeasance in office. So the Northfield Township Planning Commission bylaws actually state that a potential conflict of interest is defined as property the commissioner owns, leases, or rents, property owned by a commissioner's relative or employer, or a party with whom a commissioner shares pecuniary interests such as partner, employer, lender, renter, or investor. So that was the notice that Mr. Iaquinto received. I actually called him on February 3rd after taking a look at the letter that he provided to the board on January 24th stating that this had happened.
Is this called in the public?
It is. And I'm giving you some background information. And would you please be quiet or I'll have to ask you to leave? Thank you.
Mr. Chief, go. President.
And so I, I asked him if he would consider resigning and he refused to resign. So I did notice him that, in a discussion on the phone, that I would be taking the next step. This is the next step. Again, this is in the public, not in secret. And so I'm bringing this forward for you all to, for the board to consider and for the public to have a hearing on this item. So I have someone who would like to speak?
Madam Supervisor?
Yes.
Madam Supervisor?
It's working.
Okay, Madam Supervisor, I rise to a point of order, actually. Prior to you starting this public hearing, I believe that the accused has a right to know who his accused, who, who is alleging this. You did not state that. You just stated, it's been alleged. Prior to you starting this public hearing, I think that he deserves, as well as everyone here deserves to know, who is alleging malfeasance because you didn't state that. So I would appreciate you doing that prior to having this public hearing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I took a look, well, is it appropriate that I answer that question, Mr. Fink?
Madam Chair, I think it would be appropriate, since you've opened the public hearing, to have the members of the public speak and you could address it when and if the board deliberates.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive.
I would like... Oh, yeah, we have to vote to open the public hearing. You are correct. Okay. We're gonna open the public hearing.
Madam Supervisor, you did not open a public hearing. You did not have a vote to open a public hearing.
I'm going to now. Thank you. Sit down.
Excuse me.
Thank you, sir.
Step back, lady.
Thank you, sir.
You know, you're out of control.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
It's a point of order.
Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Motion by Chocly, support by, um...
Not yet, Mary.
Manley, to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
Should I sit down?
Okay. I don't know why the gentleman is up at this point, because you're there, Ms. Devlin.
We had requested an opportunity to address the board, and customarily, that would be done before the public speaks. Are we going to have that opportunity?
Okay. Mr. Fink, is that true?
There's no specific requirement for how you conduct the hearing. Mr. Kelly can speak when you offer him the opportunity. You could give him the opportunity ahead of time, or I believe the lady is the next person up, and you could call on him next. It's up to the chair.
Well, I'm not here as a member of the public, so I would not be speaking during the public comment.
Why not? Okay.
Okay. Here I go again.
I did say, "All in favor, say aye."
Wait, what's the motion?
The motion was to open the public hearing. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Okay, apparently it is open.
Roll call.
Okay, roll call vote.
Should I go and sit down and come back again, or what?
Yeah, it's not open yet.
Hang on, Ms. Devlin. The yes or no?
Sorry. I would like to hear Mr., um...
I can't hear you, I don't have my hearing.
I would like to hear Mr. Iaquinto validate that what he wants to say here at this meeting and represent himself, or his attorney. I initially was going to ask that the motion for the public hearing be removed as well as Agenda Item Number One, but I think it's important that Mr. Iaquinto speaks, so I will say no.
No to opening the public hearing?
No to opening the public hearing.
Oh, okay.
What? Did you vote yes?
No.
No.
I don't care.
Okay, I too feel that Sam needs to have his day in court here, because that's basically what this is. But I am not gonna support the public hearing.
Okay.
The answer's?
The answer's no.
Okay.
Okay, I'm voting yes, because I'm assuming that the only way that we can hear people speak is if we have a public hearing. Am I correct? Otherwise, how can, when will his attorney be able to speak to us?
immunity advocate.
I'm going to vote yes.
My vote, yeah.
Chocly? For the same reason.
Zelenak?
No, I'm voting no, just because as Mr. Warburton, I might have your name, is, I think as a board, we should have been told about this, as opposed to just getting it notified, 'cause I think that's important.
Mr. Docket?
Docket?
No.
So, no public hearing?
We can move on.
I guess we can move on.
It's a point of order.
Whoops, stop.
Madam Supervisor, we had requested an opportunity to address the board. I'm not here as a member of the public. I am here as the attorney for the person who's accused of committing a conflict of interest, which you have characterized as misconduct in office. I do believe he's got a right to present his case and answer those charges. I'm here to do that. I'm here to do that pursuant to written notice to you, and to all of the members of the board. I would like an opportunity to do that. I'm not here as a member of the public. I'm not limited to three minutes. My client has due process rights, which need to be respected by this board, which is a subdivision of the state and bound by the Constitution. We're not here as a member of the public. We would like to proceed. My client has a significant interest in clearing his name from charges that basically amount to a felony in this state. So, he will be heard tonight. We're not here as a member of the public.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Mr. Iaquinto and his attorney to speak to the public, to the charges.
I'll second that. Motion by Chick, support by Chocly. Any discussion?
Are we letting the public speak?
Well, no, I guess we're going to do this part first, and, but the public is here for the public hearing, so they will have an opportunity at the end, apparently. Right. So, I would like to get a comment from our attorney at this time.
We're gonna, we're...
We are in the midst, you're right, we are in the midst of a vote.
We have to vote.
We are.
We are, so we can't get comments.
We have to vote.
No, we've got a motion by Ms. Chick and support by Ms., um...
By you.
By me.
Well, if it was...
That vote, to hear Mr. Iaquinto's attorney.
Why wouldn't we vote?
Yeah, we're going to. All in favor, say aye.
Roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call. We're voting on allowing Mr. Kelly and Mr. Iaquinto to address their charges. That's...
Otto?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Chocly?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Okay. That passed. Okay.
When are we doing this?
Now.
Yeah, now we're doing this.
Number one.
Yep.
Comes under number one of our Agenda Item.
Good evening. I am Sam Iaquinto, and I'm here to address the Board of Trustees on the subject of removal of myself from the Planning Commission. The supervisor, Marlene Chocly, is simply accusing me of not putting this community Northfield Township first. My actions since June of 1993 have simply shown the opposite, that I have always put this community first. My first summer of owning my businesses, Max Marina &amp; De's Place, the summer of 1993, I was asked to sponsor a baby and teen pageant, due to the fact that the sponsor backed out last minute. I accepted, and I was also asked to be a judge. That was the start of my community involvement, of putting this community first. I became a member of the Chamber of Commerce, and within a year, I was elected VP, serving for many years as Vice President and President, through which I was one of the co-founders of the DDA, with Barb Griffith and Mindy Vischow. Mindy Vischow, Barb Griffith, and I spent many hours working on parcel numbers and documentation for the submittal to the county. In 1995, I was appointed to the PC and served for six years until I stepped down. In 2004, I was one of the co-founders of the Kiwanis Club, the Morning Kiwanis Club. I was also co-founder of the current newspaper, to give the community an identity and a news source which was not existent. That was a labor of love, not one of profit, as another individual who was here with me could attest to that. I served our sports programs as Whitmore Lake Junior Commissioner for nine years, and ran and served as the High School Touchdown Club VP. I was reappointed to the Planning Commission in 2003, and have served for a total of eighteen years. Eighteen years. I was also elected as a trustee from 2008 to 2012. Serving on the Planning Commission, I was part of four master plans. I have always, always taken my service to the Planning Commission as an honor and a serious responsibility. Section 8.9 speaks of voting. "Before casting a vote on a matter on which a member may," doesn't say "shall," "may," "reasonably reconsidered to have a conflict of interest, the member shall disclose the potential conflict of interest to the Planning Commission. The member may abstain from voting on the matter, and may absent himself." I understand this section, and I respect it immensely. I have not had a conflict of interest with this matter, as I am being accused. The Planning Commission was asked by the board to prepare marijuana ordinances by the Board of Trustees, and we did, for four months, with the help and guidance from McKenna and Paul Lippens, from January through April of 2019. Every aspect of the original ordinances we sent to the Board of Trustees in April 2019 was based on studies and discussion of what was apparent appropriate for a township, for Northfield Township. We are a recommending body, not an approval body. The Board of Trustees is that. The supervisor, Marlene Chocly, has had a personal vendetta against me for the past six years, because I did not support her to continue as Chair of the PC, and did not support her run for her office. She also has a vendetta against two others, and did not reappoint them to the PC, even though they had the most experience at that given time. In January of 2019, the supervisor recommended another name instead of mine for reappointment to the PC, and the motion died for lack of support. February 26th, 2019, two months later, she offered my name up, and that motion passed The supervisor notified the Board of Trustees about this public hearing and the intent to remove me on February 13, 2020, and shared the documentation with them. I received notice through certified mail the 19th of February, six days later, allowing me five days, five days to find representation, draft a response, and figure out a plan to these accusations. I wasn't even given her list of charges. I was just given a notice that I was being asked to, there was a public hearing where I was being asked to be removed. In the packet today, there are about fifty pages in respect to my removal, which I was not supplied any of that. And I ask you, what is, what kind of due process is that for a person that has served this township for twenty-seven years? And what kind of respect is that from the supervisor? I thought proper notification for a public hearing posting was ten days. As a Planning Commissioner, we have always followed that, and it was also posted on the township sites. It was also posted out in front of this building for any public hearings that were to be held for Northfield Township. None of that has happened for this public hearing. Again, I never received any other documentation but a notice of a one-page hearing that was sent certified mail to myself. And I had to read all of the information and all the charges from the packet myself. So, again, scrambling, because that packet came out last Thursday evening. I had very minimal time to go ahead and prepare something in response for myself. I have loved this township for twenty-seven years, met my beautiful wife in this community, raised two sons, and am one of only three small businesses that have survived three decades in this community. We have given tens of thousands of dollars as donations to the community, and have served the community respectfully for twenty-seven years. I noticed the Board of Trustees at the appropriate time, on January 24, 2020. Any discussions prior to that were not specific to my property, they were general ordinance discussions for Northfield Township. I asked the Board of Trustees to clear my name. I have and will continue to put Northfield Township first. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jim Kelly. I'm an attorney representing Mr. Iaquinto today. Mr. Iaquinto is charged by the Township Supervisor with taking a vote without disclosing an interest that would ensure medical marijuana would be permitted on his property. That is not the case. No one can say today whether medical marijuana will be permitted there, because the township has imposed a licensing process, which is still in progress. We don't know if medical marijuana will be permitted on that property. What Mr. Iaquinto did, what every member of the Planning Commission did, was study and issue a zoning ordinance that's generally applicable to this entire township. He did not rezone his own house. He did not rezone commercial property that's owned by him. The point of this conflict of interest provision is to prevent that scenario. You are a member of the Planning Commission, you own a commercial property that's owned by an LLC on paper. You're the sole member of the LLC, or it's a closely-held corporation. No one knows that 123 Main Street LLC is owned by the Commissioner. The Commissioner needs to disclose that. That's the point of the conflict of interest provision. You have an easement on the neighboring property, and if that neighboring property is reowned as commercial, your easement, which is the sole means of ingress and egress, or the sole land that could be used as a parking lot, is now much more valuable. That is what the conflict of interest provision is for. It's not for a generally-applicable zoning ordinance. I fail to see how it would be different from a master plan. There was talk tonight of a master plan for the township. All of you own property in this township. You have to, because you wouldn't be on the Board of Trustees if you didn't. None of you disclosed that. When the Planning Commission looks at the master plan, do all of them disclose that they own property in the township, or they own a business that's affected by this master plan? No, of course not, because that would be ridiculous. Are all of them removed? No, also, of course not, also ridiculous. To the board, this conduct simply is not a conflict. But to dig deeper, the chronology here is important. The Planning Commission began studying the issue in January of 2019. It took a vote on March 20th. This is before the alleged contract, well before the alleged contract. Mr. Iaquinto committed himself publicly to a vote, and crafted, helped craft with the rest of the Planning Commission, a set of ordinances that would be generally applicable to the township. Those ordinances came here, to this board, they were returned with revisions to the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission met May 1st, again, before the contract which creates the alleged conflict of interest. Mr. Iaquinto and the rest of the Planning Commission discussed it at length, it's recorded in the minutes, which are part of your board packet, the board packet that I was not provided with. And neither was Mr. Iaquinto provided with. They committed themselves to that vote, and they voted to return the product that they had originally produced, after months of study, to this board for final decision. That was their recommendation. They again looked at this two weeks later, on May 15th. Now, this is a vote that's after the alleged conflict of interest, the alleged contract. And what happened there? Mr. Iaquinto voted the exact same way. Where's the corruption? Where's the conflict? The conflict would be if he got a bunch of money and then changed his vote. He voted the same way. There's no conflict, there's no change, there's no corruption here, there's no misconduct in office or malfeasance. It's a man consistently serving the township and continuously publicly advocating for the exact same position. What was that position? To make a recommendation to this board. And what did this board do? This board, months later, after continued study, approved his zoning ordinance. And in the board pack that I wasn't provided with, that I had to download myself from the internet, there aren't copies of that ordinance here. If you're gonna remove this man, you should look at what the exact words are that he's alleged to have conflicted himself out over. You don't have enough information today to remove him. That would be ridiculous. As we sit here today, from my understanding, the marijuana licenses are just being open now. now. They've just applied, and there's a licensing process, and there's a random process for opening those and reading those. And those licenses will be awarded pursuant to the ordinances that you yourselves have drafted. Mr. Iaquinto didn't ensure marijuana would be allowed on his property. That didn't happen. That's just not factually accurate at all. The substance of what he did is important, because that is the substance of it. In these situations, the conflict would be created by a binding decision that could not be reversed. That would be the misconduct in office. That would warrant removal. Here, we just have a recommendation. The memo that the supervisor issued today, dated today, that was available to the Board but not provided to me, that refers to events that occurred at the May 28, 2019 Board Meeting. Mr. Iaquinto didn't vote there. He didn't create any conflict of interest there. Refers to Mr. Iaquinto addressing this Board at the July 23, 2019 during the public comment. That's not a conflict of interest. Everyone has the right to address this Board, whether they own property or not. Later in November, this Board adopted a marijuana ordinance. Mr. Iaquinto didn't have anything to do with that. That's your vote. December 10, Board Meeting, this Board adopted a marijuana permit application that established the window, proving in writing that Mr. Iaquinto is not responsible for these charges, that he didn't ensure marijuana would be available at his property. January 24, a month ago, applications submitted, a deadline for applications. At this point, he discloses things, because now it's something real. Now, if that property comes up before the Planning Commission, there's a real conflict. And you know what he did? He said, "I'm not going to vote on any of it." That's a step, and that, let me just tell you, that is something that the Township Supervisor complains about. She says, and I'll quote, "offering to recuse himself only," in italics, "only," when his property is before the Commission is inadequate and does not recognize his breach of the public trust." Read the bylaws. That's more than what's required. The bylaws do not require him to recuse himself at all. It says they may abstain himself, may absent himself from the room. He can continue to vote on this stuff. He is the honest guy who did disclose it and who is recusing himself. This is the guy that's accused of misconduct in office. Really? That's not adequate? That's more than what the bylaws require. If you don't like the law, you're the body that writes the laws. Change the law. Don't remove him. Maybe you do need to revisit your bylaws. Maybe you need to revisit your ordinances. I'm not here to say that. That's your decision. That's what you're elected for. Obviously, it's not a good situation the way it is. Mr. Iaquinto touched on some irregularities here, and I've touched on them as well. We weren't provided with this memo. This is my off-the-fly, off-the-cuff reaction to it. The Township Supervisor didn't disclose that she's the one that's bringing the charges. She didn't consult the Board, certainly not in an open meeting. She didn't consort the Board. You folks didn't vote on that. She decided that she would bring these charges. So now she's going to act as the prosecutor, and she's going to vote on the removal? She's going to be the prosecutor and the judge? A cynic might say that's a conflict of interest. A cynic might ask the Board to disqualify her from voting on this. But Mr. Iaquinto's not interested in that. He really just wants his name cleared in this situation. My letter that I wrote and that is included, thank you for including it in the Board Packet, referred to a longstanding policy whereby it took two members of this Board to request services of the Township Attorney. That's a longstanding policy. It's within your power certainly to revisit that. Maybe you decide to do that. Maybe you don't. That'll be up to you. I think it would have been well-founded if that policy was followed in this case. This investigation is certainly not proper. You don't even have the ordinances in front of you that supposedly created a conflict. How can you remove the guy when you don't even know what the ordinances look like? So what would a proper investigation look like? The township would investigate facts. They would gather statements from the witnesses. Did anybody talk to the members of the Planning Commission? You would review the ordinances and proposed amendments to the ordinances. You would scrutinize the votes, which I guess you can do, because you've got the minutes in front of you. You would look at this township's Board's activities and see if they were influenced in any way. You would have accurate charges, well-grounded in the facts. Again, it's simply not the case that he insured through his vote. His vote, which didn't change the outcome, because it was not the deciding vote in the Planning Commission. It's not accurate, the charge is not accurate, that he insured that marijuana would be available on his property or would be allowed on his property. You would have, you would not have statements that offering to recuse himself only when the property is before the Commission is inadequate. That's, again, that's more than what's required under the bylaws and the ordinances. We would have a real opportunity to rebut the evidence. We would be able to confront the witnesses against us, and we'd be able to present evidence, not scrambling at the last minute to address these kind of charges. He was mailed charges. He wasn't emailed these charges. They could have traveled to his home at the speed of light. Instead, it took several days. Then, when they got there, he needed to go to the post office to sign for them. Insult to injury. Mr. Iaquinto could have requested a closed session of this matter today to discuss his performance on the Planning Commission. He did not want to. He did not feel this is something that should be hidden from view. The public should know that Mr. Iaquinto never changed his vote when above and beyond the ordinances and is recusing himself, has publicly stated that he's going to recuse himself from all future votes, even though he's not required to do so. And he wanted to address his service here, which he's done today. The penalty that is proposed, which is removal from his office, is not even remotely appropriate on these facts. Any harm, and again, it's difficult to see how there was any conflict of interest created here. Any harm has already been cured, because he's going to be recusing himself from now The Township Supervisor refers to allowing Mr. Iaquinto to continue to serve on the Planning Commission, sullying the Commission. Every township and every city should be so sullied. There today was a discussion of selling publicly-owned land without an appraisal to an applicant for a marijuana license. You don't think that will expose, from what I understand was less than the highest, but you don't think that will expose the township to potential litigation? You don't think that's so much worse than what Mr. Iaquinto did or is accused of doing? But the fact of the matter here is, what he's accused of is ensuring, voting, using his position, using his position of trust to ensure marijuana would be available at that property. And that's just not the case. Maybe it will be at the end of the licensing process. Maybe it won't. We just don't know. And because of that, you can't in good conscience remove this man. He should be allowed to continue to serve the public until the end of his term. Thank you.
Thank you.
I would like to make a motion. Because we're on number one. Not to remove Sam Iaquinto from the Northfield Township Planning Commission due to alleged malfeasance.
I'll support.
We have a motion by Ms. Otto with support by Ms. Chick. Now we have a discussion. I don't think we have heard everything that needs to be heard about this item. And the allegations that came back this way, I don't believe are true. We received, we received the letter from Mr. Iaquinto, January 24. And that was the first time any of us knew that his property was sold or had a purchase option with a marijuana company. So I do have some questions for Mr. Iaquinto before I would vote on any of these items, this motion. Would that be appropriate, Mr. Fink, since we are in the midst of a motion?
The statute says to remove someone, you must first have a public hearing. The Board adopted an agenda. I don't think it was necessary for the Board to vote to open the public hearing. I think the Board had adopted an agenda. The Chair of the meeting could have opened a public hearing. But then the Board voted essentially to amend the agenda, and then voted to amend the agenda again by having Mr. Iaquinto and his attorney speak, which the Board can do, but it makes for a little bit of disorder. I think that the Board could vote on Trustee Otto's motion. What the Board could not do right now is vote to remove Mr. Iaquinto until you have a public hearing.
So can we vote to keep him without having a public hearing with some reasonable, I mean, can I ask Mr. Iaquinto some pointed questions?
Do you have a motion on the floor? The Board can have discussion. If it's part of your usual process to involve members of the community, then yes.
Okay. I think it's important to our vote to actually know from Mr. Iaquinto what happened.
Is this a trial? Ms. Otto, you have something?
Yeah, I do have some comments to make.
Okay. Since you made the motion, go ahead.
Okay. There's a couple of things that a supervisor can and cannot do. One, you asked Sam to resign on February 3. The supervisor has no authority to ask for the Planning Commission, any member on the Planning Commission Board to resign. Only the Board, the Township Board, has that authority, because the Township Board is the one that appointed him. The other point is, calling the public hearing, the supervisor has all right to call a public hearing. But the public hearing was alleging malfeasance, and she was the one that was bringing it forth, not the Board. Shared documents was, the comment was that on the February 13, the notice to the Board that a public hearing was supposed to be made, that there was documents shared with the Board at that time. There wasn't. It was just a memo to the Board stating that there was going to be a public hearing. The information that is in our packet, we received it the same time that it was posted on the website. We were not told about the request for resignation on February 3, not until we got the memo on the 13. One key aspect of this is this. The marijuana ordinances were brought to the Township Board on April 23. From April 23 to November of when the Township Board approved those ordinances, the Planning Commission no longer had, had any touch, any draft, any part of changing those ordinances. It solely stayed with the Township Board. On the April 23 meeting, there was no motion for those changes to go back to the Planning Commission to review. There was only a comment made by Supervisor Chalkley that it goes back to the Planning Commission to consider. That's all that was done. There was no motion on it. So from what I understand, as of the 23, until we voted until November, it all stayed with the Township Board. It never went back to the Planning Commission.
Are you finished, Ms. Otto?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Iaquinto, I have some questions. Could you please come up to the podium? Mr. Iaquinto?
If you don't have enough information to remove Mr. Iaquinto, your vote should be no. You should have conducted an investigation.
I have some questions for Mr. Iaquinto.
He declines to answer.
That's unfortunate. Okay, then I will have to state, I'll have to state what I know then. The, I have the floor. So there is a state law that says that someone with a conflict of interest needs to disclose it. It is shall. It is not maybe. It is not if it's a good idea. It's shall disclose a conflict of interest. And the bylaws of the Planning Commission, which we developed, I actually voted no on them, but which we developed, state the reasons for a conflict of interest. So we have all of these months, the Planning Commission goes about their business, they produce an ordinance that they provide to the Board on March 20. The Board takes a look at it, refers it to the attorney, requests to have the Planning Commission actually come and hear some presentations on the 23 of April, and only Mr. Cuzno came. The rest of them didn't think that it was important enough to come. So we only had one. On May 1, at that public, at the 23 of April meeting, the Board made about, let's see, what do you have, 10 or 12? 10, I think, recommendations to go back to the Planning Commission. One of them would have eliminated.
They were motions.
It was a motion.
They weren't recommendations.
It was a motion, yeah. It was a motion.
Were motions on each one?
Yep.
To change on?
To change it, yep. So the Board wanted to change the ordinance so that there were no retail or provisioning centers in the Whitmore Lake districts, all of the Whitmore Lake districts. And that was sent back to the Planning Commission. So on May 1, the Planning Commission had that. And then Mr. Iaquinto made a motion to, for the Planning Commission not to consider what the Board had said, and to return the original ordinance back to the Board. So my question to Mr. Iaquinto, which he probably isn't going to answer, is when did it occur to you that you might be interested in selling your Marina to a marijuana establishment? What, what month?
Having an idea to sell a Marina is not a conflict of interest. The conflict of interest is defined in the bylaws. So we're just on a fishing expedite.
He has a pecuniary interest for his property.
No, he does not, if there's an idea. He does not have a pecuniary interest in an idea. That's not actually.
On May 10, an agreement just poof, and there it was, and Mr. Iaquinto signed it on May 10. So probably it was negotiated for a while prior to May 10, but Mr. Iaquinto doesn't want to know.
See, but that's the key, that's an assumption you're making. And you don't have any evidence. You're putting something as an intent.
I do have evidence that it was signed on May 10, which is the reason of the whole, the whole reason of the public hearing. And then May 15, the Planning Commission dealt with our recommendations again, and Mr. Lippens told the Planning Commission that the original maker of the motion to send the original ordinance back to the Board needed to be the person to rescind the motion so that they could.
And they decided not to, and they declined.
Mr. Iaquinto refused to rescind the motion.
No, the Board refused to rescind the motion.
You should re.
I did. I have it right here. So the motion was never made to go to, it says on our minutes, "And answer the question from Lippens. Chalkley confirmed that each of the motions passed by the Board is a direction for the Planning Commission to consider in revising the draft ordinance." We never requested the Planning Commission to revise the plan, to revise the ordinance. We already revised them by making those motions.
Okay. I have the floor. So Mr. Iaquinto, on May 15, said he will not agree to rescind the motion he made to send the proposal back to the Board. He said the Commission prepared an ordinance based on many hours of work and research, and he refused to rescind the motion. and he refused to rescind the motion. So, the planning commission did not take any further action on that, and we had the original one. He also drafted a letter on May 1st and May 15th to send back to the board stating that they wanted the original, original ordinance. So, we had, we had many opportunities for Mr. Iaquinto to disclose a conflict of interest, and it didn't happen. So, then, on July 23rd, we had a public hearing at the Board of Trustees about the permitting process. And Mr. Iaquinto got up and shared with the board how he, he felt it was important that we have marijuana establishments downtown. And immediately after that, Mr. Maynard, who is actually here tonight, came and spoke to the board and talked about a really nice restaurant that could be on the water. And it just happens to be Mr. Iaquinto's marina. So, we have Mr. Iaquinto and we have Mr. Maynard, who already have a contract with each other at that public hearing, but there was no disclosure that it was the marina. So, that, to me, it's a matter of integrity. There were multiple opportunities to share that, and if, if you had just shared that back then, it would have been the board, the planning commission could have taken whatever action they thought was appropriate. We would not be here today. So, the questions were, was there a conflict of interest? Yes, there was a conflict of interest. And did you disclose, disclose the conflict in a timely manner? And that is no. And the other thing is, is that malfeasance? It's yes.
You are making that decision for the board. The board has not made that decision.
We can vote on if there was a potential conflict of interest, but it doesn't matter at this point.
No, that's not what's, that's not, the motion that's on the table, the table, the motion that's on the table is, is not to remove Sam Iaquinto from the township planning commission due to malfeasance. That's.
Okay, that's the motion, but I'm.
And so, I called order right now.
I'm not finished.
If there's no other discussion.
I'm not finished.
I called a question.
I'm not finished.
Call the question.
Call the question.
Call the question.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not done. You interrupted me. Okay.
Okay, I'm gonna ask.
And what I have to say is.
I'm gonna ask for a bathroom break.
No. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Docket. Okay. Okay. Well, you can hear as you're walking out. Okay. Okay. Five-minute break. Okay. Five-minute break.
I think we need to apologize to him. I don't know that he would stop.
Oh, I have it.
And your, your change, and your motion, each one, changed the ordinance right there. You guys were deciding, period. Nothing else mattered.
That changes the ordinance.
No, not saying to me, I mean, there's no point.
I don't think it's gonna solve.
It is embarrassing, and that's my problem. She's playing judge and jury. She left everybody out.
I'm gonna break the charge, that's what I mean, just like so many people, so many kids, you can do that. That's right, and she, you know, she was calling a public hearing, nobody was calling a public hearing, she was voting for a public hearing. The attorney's saying, well, she can just do it, it's like, I mean.
I'm not a fan.
I don't see, you know, where she has the right to call a public hearing, open up the door.
Right. I know.
Every day.
I think it's not Friday, because I have, I have these things, 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 here in the back.
I thought she was coming out.
Oh.
One, two, three, four.
One, two, three, four. Good evening. I think the, we've lost the mics.
Hello? 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 Oh, there we go. Okay. Now you can, okay, good. All right, everyone, let's get back to business here.
We need to, we need to make a comment.
You want to make a comment?
Yeah. It, it's just housekeeping comment.
Yeah, okay.
So, Chief Wagner wanted to remind everybody that you could go, anybody that is parked in the back of the building can go down the staircase over on the side. They don't have to go all the way around the building.
Okay. Sounds good.
But you can get back in if you go, if you go out there.
I'd like to call this meeting back to order. Okay. So, there are consequences to decisions, and Mr. Iaquinto made a decision to hide the fact that he had a purchase agreement on his marina with a marijuana establishment until the last possible moment. And that's, that's too bad. But there's also even no expression of remorse, or like, I did wrong, or I won't do this again, or whatever. It's, there's just nothing. So, the, this board doesn't seem to care, doesn't seem to, doesn't seem to want to take a stand on what's honest and, what is honesty and integrity. So, what about transparency? This board talks about it a lot. And I'm not seeing, and I'm not seeing it. So, we can, we can move on.
Madam Chair? I don't think you want to open that Pandora box about transparency here.
I have made every attempt to put the information in for this board so that the board can make decisions. I don't, I didn't go around behind the scenes and try to make this secret.
Well, let us make our decision. Let's call, let's call the question.
So, we will call the question, and it was a motion by, yeah, what is the motion? What is the motion? Motion by Ms. Otto.
The motion was made to not remove Sam Iaquinto from the township, from the Northfield Township Planning Commission due to alleged malfeasance.
And I supported. Okay, motion by Otto, support by Chick. Do we have any more discussion on this? Oh, without, you're calling the question. Okay.
I'm saving mine to the end of the board meeting, but I didn't get any comment time.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
I, I have a question. Are we sure that we want to use the alleged in there? I mean, is that the proper?
I'm just repeating.
I mean, do we want to, do we want to say he didn't, you know, or do we want to use the word alleged?
Just keep them as.
That's, that's my question. I want to be clear, I want to be clear.
The motion has been made, Mr. Docket, and seconded, so you have a motion before you, and I think the question's been called, so I think the board should vote on the motion.
Yeah. So, it's a motion to call the question, so.
So, my real, I think, Mr., if I may speak for you a little bit, Mr. Docket, I think our question for you, Mr. Fink, is do you have any concerns with the, the language of the motion?
Right.
Based on the topic.
I think the motion clearly expresses the intent of trustee Otto, and if the board adopts it, it clearly expresses the intent of the board.
Thank you.
Okay.
You said alleged malfeasance?
Mm-hmm. Okay. I guess we can have a roll call vote then. So, this is not for calling the question, this is the question.
This is the motion.
Okay.
What was that motion again?
Okay, Mr. Docket.
Well, we're buds, you know? We gotta be clear on this one, right?
Not to remove.
Oh, don't do that. Okay, go ahead.
The motion is made is not to remove Sam Iaquinto from the township, the Northfield Township Planning Commission due to alleged malfeasance.
So, yes is not to remove, no is to remove.
We always don't like those double negatives.
Double negative.
Thank you.
Okay.
Got that, Mr. Docket? Are we good?
I'm set.
Okay.
Otto.
You're calling me first?
Yep.
So, double negative is yes.
Your motion.
Okay.
Docket?
Yes.
Chockley?
No.
Chick?
Yes.
Manly?
No.
Yes.
No, yes?
Yes. I have to think it.
Was that a yes?
So, yes, I want to vote do not remove him.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Okay, that passed.
And I will save my questions for the end.
Five to one. Okay, thank you. Okay. I'd like to make a motion to approve the January 11th, 2020 Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes.
I'll support.
Do we have, we may have some.
Got any questions? On the minutes.
I have one, one correction.
Got it.
Okay. The one correction I have is under first call to the public, the second, well, the real, the first real paragraph, is it lapel pins or is it label pins? I believe it's lapel. But other than that, I don't have anything. Oh, yeah. Do you have any changes, Mr. Docket? No? Okay, anyone else?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, so I, I will revise my motion to approve the February 11th Board of Trustees Meeting Minutes as amended. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Manly. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, that passed six, zero. Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve the payment of the open bills with the expected check run date of 2/26/2020 for a total of $128,851.39 from all funds in the municipal investment fund account. Do I have a second?
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Otto. Any discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead, Mr. Docket.
Page two, center, middle way down, Tetra Tech Storage Stack, now planning design, I am going to mention the fact that Mr. Udo Huff did today, tonight, no bid contracts. These are these companies that we've used for 75 years, never, ever bid a contract. We just hand them the money, hand them the money. So, I, I just, I, I can't bring myself to vote for this one, when we just, I think we could save a lot of money if we put these things out for bid. Thank you.
Okay.
Roll call vote.
Roll call vote on the open bills.
No.
What?
I'm sorry. No, we were talking.
Okay. We're doing a roll call vote on the open bills.
We're listening, be careful.
Okay.
It's criminal.
Chick? Yes. Manly? Yes. Otto?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Docket?
No. I agree with you, Mr. Docket. We should have gone out for bid.
Okay, so it passed four to two. All right, the next item is, oh, boy, this one.
What's that one?
The municipal bonds, right? Bond council. I think we're gonna need some discussion on this item, but I'd like to make a, well, let's discuss the difference between the general obligation and the revenue bonds and see if we can't, see if we can't come to some resolution on how we would, would want to move forward if we were going to go ahead with this. Would you like to come up, Mr. Maynard? And what's your name, sir?
My name is Stephen Haydock.
You're gonna have to talk.
You have to turn it on and hold it up to your mouth.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Haydock. I'm from Ben Zinsky and Company, Municipal Finance Advisors.
Stephen Haydock, okay.
Need to talk closer to the mic.
Closer to the mic, okay.
Yeah, that's much better.
Sorry.
Okay, thank you. Well, thanks for coming tonight.
You're welcome.
To help us through this. I know that Ms. Zelenak has some questions, or at least some comments about the difference between revenue bonds and general obligation bonds, and.
So, my, just in general, and we've had this discussion. So, my, just in general, and we've had this discussion, I'm more for doing the revenue bonds to put the risk on the people that are using the service. I know that they go out at a higher interest rate and then, because it's not the full faith, and then that you have to do, every year, you have to do a 10% to make sure you have the funds appropriate. Like, make sure you have over 10%. My other question, though, is, and you can talk a little bit more about that, is, what does it do to the overall bond rating or the rating of the township if I were to give or do revenue bonds versus general bonds? So, the overall rating, bond rating of the township, is it better if I do revenue bonds versus general bonds?
Well, the, um, rating agencies are going to look at the, the bond issue itself. So, the rating for the revenue bonds could be different than the general obligation bonds, but as a township itself, I'm not 100% sure on that. It, it would depend on the size of the bond issue and the security behind it. So, with the, um, revenue bonds, I don't think that there would be much of a difference, assuming that the township had the 10% bond reserve included in the bond issue and, um, adjusted the rates annually to meet the debt service obligations on the bonds.
So, again, my thought is, if I'm a municipality or go out and, let's say, you know, we needed to borrow $3 million for a township matter, just taking this building, for example, that we went out and bonded for three, an extra $3 million, that's the only example I have. Again, if I have revenue bonds on my books or general bonds on my books, what's that going to do? Does, it doesn't affect my borrowing?
The rating agencies are going to look at the, the demographics of the township as a whole and the economy, the tax value, all sorts of things like that, especially for the general obligation bonds. Whereas the revenue bonds are going to look more towards the, the financials of the, the system itself because that's what's being pledged to the bond, to the repayment of the bonds. The decision for the township, I think, comes down to, to cost. And with the general obligation bonds, they're payable out of the general fund or any, uh, tax levies available to the township. Whereas the revenue bonds come out of the charges from the system. So, if there are any residents that aren't on the water and sewer here, they wouldn't really be responsible for paying the, the debt service on the bonds. Whereas the revenue bonds, it directly impacts the users of the system.
We have no water. Just...
Thank you.
If, if I may chime in just for a minute, because we did look at this, we talked with the manager about this, and, uh, Mr. Benzininski as well, Bobby Benzininski. And I think from the township's perspective and from the sewer users' perspective, the reason it's recommended that you go with limited tax bonds, which is the resolution that you have before you tonight, is to keep the cost down, keep the interest rate down, keep the user rates down, so you don't have to set them at an artificially high 110% rate. And so, you don't have to fund a bond reserve with, you know, $450,000, $500,000 sitting there for the life of the bonds, doing nothing but providing security for the bondholder.
That's why I picked the capital improvement bonds.
One, one other thought, I'm not sure what the reason is for, you know, wanting to go with the revenue bond. A lot of communities want to say, "Oh, we want to issue a revenue bond and we'll issue it." And then they're just pledging the revenues in the system, and if we don't have enough revenues, so what? But, once you issue a bond, you're not going to want to be in a position to default. We've had many clients who have issued revenue bonds who have gotten in trouble and who have had to, you know, boost up the revenues from general fund transfers or whatnot in the interim. So, even though you issue a revenue bond, you know, if the revenues of your system in the future aren't sufficient, you're still going to be making that debt payment.
Of course.
Yeah.
So, may I address the resolution for you?
Yeah, feel free.
Okay. So, you have a resolution before you tonight and my cover letter. Um, the resolution is the first step in the bonding process, and you've seen this at one or two of your prior meetings. Tonight, it's been filled out completely and it's ready for adoption if you so desire. Uh, the resolution is the first step. It authorizes, uh, the publication of a notice of your intent to issue a bond in the newspaper. It discloses what the maximum amount of that bond is, and that number is $4,665,000. That's the absolute ceiling that you could issue the bond for. Now, in practice, once you publish the notice and got your projects out to bid, once the bids came in and you realized what the actual bid cost is and you add a reasonable construction contingency and costs of issuance, you reduce the bond to the amount that you need to fund the project. The 4, 6, 6, 5 is just an absolute ceiling, okay? So, once the notice is published, there is a 45-day period where if residents wanted to, they could circulate petitions to ask and perhaps force the township board to put the question on the ballot going forward. And then the second purpose of the resolution is to protect you under the tax exempt rules under the IRS code because you'd be issuing tax exempt bonds. And they essentially say if you're going to spend money before you issue those bonds and you want to pay yourself back from those bond proceeds, then you need to make certain declarations. And those declarations are in the resolution, okay? So, like, if you're start, going to start construction or order materials or equipment before you issued the bond, you'd have the ability to pay yourself back from the bond once you did issue that bond, okay? And then finally, the resolutions recognize the appointment of Miller Canfield, our firm, as Bond Counsel, and Benzininski &amp; Company as the Financial Advisor. That's the general overview, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And Stephen can answer questions as far as the finances or market rates or whatnot.
Any questions here by the board concerning this?
I have a comment.
Yeah, oh, okay, go ahead.
Okay. Miller Canfield, they're charging us $29,500 for their, what, their piece of action. The finance advisor, he's charging us $28,330 for his portion. And these are the same companies we've used for years, 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 and years. Never, ever bidding out, using somebody else. It makes me sick to sit here and just have these people come and just give us the price year after year after year, and, and we just, we don't do anything about it. We're all too lazy to go out and get some other bids. Thank you.
Okay. I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 20, well, 26, 20260, authorizing the publication of notice of intent to use capital improvement bonds and declaration of intent to reimburse from bond proceeds. So, I have made that motion. Do I have a second? Motion by Chockley. Ms. Chick? Oh, Ms. Chick supported it. Okay, we can have more discussion.
Did Ms. Chick support?
Yes.
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
That was Ms. Manley. My apologies.
She was quicker.
Well, it was, she was quick, yeah. So, we can have more discussion here if, if there's any concerns on part of the board about moving forward with this or not moving forward with this.
So, the estimated cost, I spoke with Ms. Rains, because we have a, it says, "Construction, Engineering, and Contingencies," and I was looking for a breakdown of those costs.
And they're in here, right?
Where?
It was the last page of, uh... Did you see this one?
Yes. So, so if you look at the first one, it says, "Construction, Engineering, and Contingencies, I asked for a breakdown of how much is construction, how much is engineering, and how much is for the contingency.
Okay, I don't know.
I remember that.
Correct.
And then in general, I'm one that, you know, thinks we should do a revenue bond as, as our sewer is going to need line improvements and eventually a, probably a new update to the sewer plant. I think it's good to charge the people that are getting the services. I understand the increase in holding it, and I think that, as you said, is to obligate or have it for the bondholder. And as it was mentioned earlier, it would be probably a, a dollar extra, um, a week. And I think, I mean, a month, rather. So, I think, again, I think I would be, I would vote for it if it was revenue bonds. I understand lately with the Eagle, as they, they're called, that there is a, they have violated or given us violations so that we need to do something, and this is the option we're picking. I fully support that at this point in time. I just do not support the method of getting the revenue to pay for that.
Okay. Well, it represents about almost $800,000 in the cost of the bond over the, the time, which is, which was my consideration.
I understand.
Which is why I chose the capital improvement bonds. I can't imagine, um, this township defaulting on, on it. Ms. Chick?
And I would like to comment that any upgrade in any kind of infrastructure that provides more effective and more efficient treatment of wastewater, whatever it is, even our roads, that it benefits the entire township, and we should all be invested in making sure that we're handling things the way that we're supposed to. To me, it's no different than, you know, if Washington County Road Commission goes out and does somebody road grades and we just charge those people on the road. It just, um, it should be the responsibility of the entire township. I, I can't even imagine we default. We've been paying on a bond for, what, 20 years and never missed a payment, so... And if I recall, the first payment comes out of the general fund. It doesn't even go to the people, correct? If it's missed.
Oh, if it were missed, that...
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah, I would anticipate if you're in a position to miss a debt payment, the board would probably authorize payment from the general fund, correct? Generally, because you don't want to default on a bond.
No.
That'll live with you forever.
And, and that didn't matter if it was, if it, whichever bond that we had?
Correct.
Okay.
I, I would like to point out, though, with the revenue bonds, so there is about $800,000 extra in cost, but that doesn't even take into account the, the rates need to be set at, to generate 110% of the required debt service. So, there's another 10% cost added on to the, the users' bills in addition to that debt service.
Right. Well, I would like to minimize it as much as possible. It is something, however, that we've needed to do for decades, and this township has not, you know, has not done it. So, you know, I guess we're the ones who get to attempt to correct this problem. I hate to see our water being polluted and with the untreated wastewater coming out under the doors in the last, um, heavy rains we had. You know, I'd hate to see that happening again. So, and, and that particular Horseshoe Lake drain goes into the Huron River, which goes in, which supplies the water for the city of Ann Arbor. So, I just think it's important, it's good stewardship, and I think we need to take care of something that we've needed to do for a long, long time. So, um, any more comments?
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Rains?
Everybody else had the same problem we did. It was the worst rain in 65 years, first time it ever happened in the 65 years that we own, that, that we run the plant, so... I would like to know, is, nobody else cares about how come we didn't get these prices broke down? Excuse me, they wanted 25% contingency. And I said, "Hey, the most I ever seen was 15% contingency."
I agree. I do, definitely, mister.
And we, and we have nothing.
We don't get, we don't get what we ask.
And the things that we asked for.
Right.
And you guys are ready to vote on it without us getting our answer or me getting our answer.
I agree.
I will have to go.
Madam Supervisor?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rains.
In respect to the 25%, what they're trying to do is make sure that there's so much room there that you don't have to re-advertise if the bids come in high. And you'd actually, as I mentioned, you'd be borrowing based on the actual numbers that come in. And then my understanding from the engineer was that the estimated price was 3.7 million. The notice is 4,665. So, 25% of that, if my math is right, is around $40,000 for engineering. I wasn't able to get ahold of, uh, Mr. Ruble because he was out of town on business, I believe. So, I don't have an answer on that part of what, uh, Ms. Zelnik could ask me to get for you.
But you understand that I've been around long enough on these, I, I've been in two sewer districts that I had to wait 20 years. They puff the deal up and they hold all this money for years, 20 years. They won't give you any of it back for 20 years. And it's, and there's gobs of my, we all just got thousands of dollars back from a sewer in Horseshoe Lake that I was on. I mean, I don't, that's why I don't like to see them puff the deal up so big.
If, if I may? That is specific to special assessment projects. And they set the special assessment role and issue the bonds and build the project. And in that case, they earned a lot of interest that they didn't anticipate, and the cost came in lower. And then the township did continue to hold it for a number of years. That will not happen here. This is simply the authorization to publish the bond notice of your intent to issue a bond with the absolute maximum that that bond will be. And then after your project goes out to bid and comes in, if it comes in where the engineer estimates it, your bond is going to be much lower than this. This is just an absolute ceiling. It gives you some cushion. We don't know what's going to happen between now and the time you go out to bid, what the market's going to be like, things like that, so it provides a cushion. And this doesn't commit you, I mean, you'll, this will come back to you not only for approval of the bids, award of the bid, but also authorization for the actual bond amount that you're going to issue. So, that will come back before this board again.
Okay. I do know that every project that Tetra Tech has done, though, has come in under budget. They're pretty good about making sure that we're...
When you add 25%.
Well, it's not, 25% includes, includes the Benzininski and the, uh, Miller Canfield costs, too, so...
Correct. So, in, in this estimate of costs before you, what I, what I did is I, I took the total, the $4,662,500, rounded it up to an even $5,000 because that's what you need for, to issue bonds. They need to be in $5,000 increments. And then I subtracted out the cost of issuance from Department of Treasury, Miller Canfield, my firm, and then that, the leftover amount is the construction, engineering contingencies kind of all wrapped into one. So, depending on where the construction bids come out at, like we said before, this will all kind of change depending on, this is, this is a maximum ceiling amount.
If I could ask another question, because I've already asked it of them, but could you comment, though, at what point in time is there a commitment to pay your firms?
I didn't hear that. A commitment to what?
To pay for their service.
Yeah, so our, our services are generally provided on a fixed fee pursuant to our engagement letter. Um, and we are paid at closing, so if you don't proceed with the project and don't issue the bonds, then we don't send you a bill.
So, is everyone ready to vote at this point? Everybody feel comfortable? Okay. Um, I guess we'll need a roll call vote here.
Chockley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
No.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley? Yes. Chick?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Okay, that passes four to two. Thank you very much.
I do want to remind the board that since we did make this motion, that we do have an ordinance that says that we have to send out a postcard. So, while our, our bond attorney is making that recommend, or going to put out those notifications, the township is also obligated to do the notifications as well.
That's correct.
If I may, that, that is a separate process that is done.
Right. That's us.
At the next step. Yeah, but that's before we come back, this is after you bid your project out. We know what the actual bond amount is, and before you adopt the resolution authorizing the bonds, that's when your public indebtedness notice needs to go out. And we'll, we'll assist you with that. We did that with the last bond issue.
I...
It doesn't go out this time. It goes down when you actually...
Do it, yes.
Correct. Yes, so then you have 45 days.
But I wanted to remind everybody that that is out there.
Yeah. I think it's a good thing, because at least when you're going to raise their bill about 100 bucks...
Thank you very much.
They're going to know it. It's not going to be, "Oh, oh, what did you guys do?" They'll know about it.
I have a question.
Okay.
So, do we need to publish the notice of intent or not right now?
Yes.
Yes. That we do, just the one that we send out to the homeowners, we don't?
Yeah, the one...
Okay. Right. Okay.
Yeah, so that the notice that needs to be published now is Exhibit A to that resolution that you just approved.
You were talking about ours.
Yep, and my cover letter explains it needs to be a quarter-page advertisement, just published one time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have one question. So, are you going to offer the bonds to us?
Well, we, we could, but the thing with buying bonds is the purchaser, the initial purchaser purchaser has to buy all of them.
Oh, okay.
So these will be sold, these will be underwritten, there'll be an underwriter that will purchase all of them, and then they'll resell them in the secondary market in $5,000 denominations.
Okay, because I, I've actually heard getting municipality bonds is, it's, goes, they go very fast.
Yeah.
That's what I've heard.
Generally, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, you'll, in the secondary market, you might be able to find them, but generally, when you do a competitive bid bond sale, the buyers buy them all at once.
Right. That's their hot commodity.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Can I ask a question? Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
You go.
You ask your question.
No, not at that. I want to ask Dan a question.
Okay, I do too. I want to say something to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have, has, you've looked at the property of the wastewater treatment plant several times, right?
Yeah. Once or twice.
Yeah, several times, right. So the, the issue that the ladies from the Green Oak brought up about the basin being placed closer upstream, has that been investigated or is it a possibility?
Well, the, the only property we have is right next to the plant to the south, which is designated, designated for an expansion of the plan itself.
Right.
And even if we moved it there, it would, it would cost hundreds of thousands of dollars to move it there over where it's at now. As far as like moving it out in the system, that's not a feasible because we're, all our sewer lines mainly are along the creek, and we have no property in town where we could put anything like that anyway. And usually when they're inside communities like that, they're, they're put underground in there, part of the system where it, it fits. That, that would not work for us.
Okay, I have another question too. I remember this conversation back at the other board, before this board, when we first talked about the equalization basin and there was a discussion about the design, whether steel was better or concrete, and that we chose steel because...
I, I think it was a cost and it's more durable. Concrete decays over the years.
And then there was a conversation about being in, in ground, and I remember that conversation had to do with the access to actually, if there's a problem getting into it.
Well, if it, the, the way it is set up now, it, the sewer line comes in there under pressure, so it automatically would fill the tank. And when you, when it drains, it would gravity back out to the plant.
Right.
So if you put it in the ground, it would still fill up automatically, but you would have to have it pumped back out then. You'd have to have a pump system to pump it back out. And then, we're fairly close to the rural road tracks, and to put something 30 feet in the ground would, would probably be a, a pretty costly item. It's always more expensive to put stuff in the ground.
Okay.
You have dewatering and all kinds of problems like that, so.
Okay, thank you.
One more, right? Ms. Chick, what about the blue color? Does it have to be blue?
Oh, no, it doesn't have to be blue. They can pick a color.
Well, the reason, the reason it's, blue is a standard and anything other than blue costs more money. I, I don't remember, it might be $100,000 or something, I don't know. I, I forget what it was, but I, I will come...
I don't think that came up, though.
The color?
Yeah, they did.
No, the cost of the color.
No, the cost did not come up. They were looking for something that was...
Yeah, but I'll, I will come back, I'll talk to the manufacturer and, and get a cost estimate, I, and see what the colors...
Camouflage, like your coat. What do you see?
I know, that'd be perfect.
So, so the only recommendation that I wanted to make to you and to Mr. Ains is, is that there, Brian Rupel wasn't there at the meeting, but he did have a representative from, from his firm.
Yeah.
And I think somebody was from...
Yeah, I was out of town also.
Yeah, and somebody was there from the wastewater treatment plant. They took excellent notes. We just took our little notes and, but I think it's very important that, you know, as good neighbors to the people on Fair Oaks is that we try to, you know, ease their attention as much as possible.
We, we've, we've tried to work with them over, in the past of it.
Well, they actually insist the next time it comes before them, that the applicant be there.
Yeah, and, and we talked, I've talked about tree issue too. The trees where the tank is sitting are just scrubby little trees. There's, it's not like sitting next to the plant in the woods there where there's big, massive oaks and stuff. There's not really nice trees there. But we've talked that we, we could do something with trees at our cost to help prevent, to help the view and stuff that way too. So, I, I don't thi, I think we could do that really easy, whatever they would think would work for them.
And Dan and I have talked about putting evergreens in because the area photos show that, you know, a lot of the year that woods is not leafed out. It's bare trees. So you could clearly see most of the plants. So if we put an evergreen line of, of trees, that, that, that should block it year round.
Okay.
Yeah, not, not little two footers either.
No.
Yeah.
Anywhere from seven to eight years old, evergreens would probably be...
Yeah, we, we could work something out that would be appropriate for them too.
Fun as Christmas trees.
Okay.
I did try to contact their planner today, I didn't get a call back, but we are following up with the Green Oak on it. And I am sorry I missed the meeting, but I've got sick rather fast Thursday.
We were glad to be there.
You wanted me to sit right between the two of you and breathe the germs, right?
Okay. All right. I guess so, Mr. Willis, feel free to take off. Thank you very much. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 20619 to accept the resignation of Timothy Green and approve the severance agreement for $230,000.
I'll support.
Motion by Chockley, support by Manly. We ready for a roll call on this? Mr. Docket, go ahead.
I have four questions for the chief.
Okay.
If you'll allow me to do them all, it'll take me about two minutes.
Okay.
Green keeps his badge, is that correct?
He gets a retirement badge.
Excuse me?
A retirement badge.
Oh, it's not his, not the regular badge?
It's, it's a badge, but it's not a normal badge.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Okay, well, badges are quite expensive, that's why I'm asking. He gets to keep his gun.
Yes, sir.
And that's township property.
Keep his, what was that? His gun?
He gets to keep his gun.
Okay.
Has he turned in, excuse me, I'm sorry?
No, I wanted to know why.
This, this was...
I just, it may be protocol, but I just want to know why.
It was part of the agreement.
Oh, okay.
So it should have been in what you guys received.
Okay.
I, okay, number three, has Green turned in everything that he has of Green Oak, of North Hill Townships?
Yes, I believe so.
I mean, like, any kind of property or, or whatever? Okay. Last but not least, I see nothing about unemployment compensation is, I'd like to know if he qualifies for unemployment when this is done.
That would be a labor attorney question.
Yeah.
No, I'd like to, I would have liked to have seen it in...
It's too late, isn't it?
I would have liked to have seen it in this.
In general, if someone resigns, voluntarily quits, they are not eligible for unemployment. There are exceptions, he could apply.
Well, the police union, I suppose, are pretty tough, you know, but thank you.
I'm going to have to get a set of those for myself.
He was union. He was saying because he's union.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we don't, we don't know. I just thought maybe somebody would know if, if we're liable.
We have any more questions from the rest of the board?
Well, we do.
Okay, roll call, please.
Any more questions?
Any more questions? You had four questions, right? Four? Okay.
Go.
Roll call, please.
Manly, yes. Docket?
Yes.
Zelina?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Chockley?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes six zero.
Two, $230,000.
Uh, I, let's see, the next one, I'd like to make a motion to approve the hiring of Brandon Diacino.
Okay.
Diacino? Anyway, as a part-time police officer, this approval is pending medical and physical clearance as well as a physiological exam.
Yeah, that should be psychological.
Medical, and, and, and...
Psychological.
Psycho, medical, physiolo...
Yeah, I, I, I had a type over there.
Okay, let me do the bottom one here. I move to hire Brandon Diacino as a part-time police officer contingent on passing a medical and psychological exam, and he would be paid 1860 per hour, according to the police union contract for starting pay. Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Chick. Any more, any discussion on this one? Okay.
I just, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Are we short people? I mean, are we going to make this guy, if he pans out, is he going to be, is he going to be full-time?
Potentially, if we, I mean, we're, we're at full staff for full timers right now.
Okay.
But we are, we are short part timers.
So nice to have somebody in the wing.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes six zero.
Thank you. If there's nothing else from me.
No, feel free to go. Sorry it's so late. All right, I'm going to make a motion to remove number seven because the decision has not been made on a new front desk clerk yet, so...
Well, I'd like to say something here.
Yeah?
I have on my, on my, I would like to have the words "part-time" put in here. I know, I know it says the hours, but I, I just, I just would like to have "part-time" added for when we do it.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Okay. All right, so, you know...
Agree. Did you get a support on that?
Yeah, I don't know, I didn't.
Support.
Okay, motion by Chockley, support by Zelina. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you, that passes. Okay, now we are at goals and priorities. And since I don't know anything about this, I'm going to let Mr. Ains and Ms. Otto talk about it.
The board at a prior meeting had asked that we go back to the 2017 goals and then bring it forward because the 2018 goals were tabled several times. And I had brought it to your attention recently that it would be a good time to go over goals again because it's, it goes hand in hand with the budget process and also with the capital improvement process. Ms. Otto was willing to volunteer to work with me on this. And so the document that you have is primarily her product, except when it was an error, it's mine. So, but I do think it presents fairly well. There are some comments that Ms. Zelina had mentioned that she wanted added or changed, and there's a few things that I might add to. But I think the intention was to see whether these represent what the board wanted to do going forward.
Yes, and this was just a draft.
Oh, okay. So you want comments?
So the priority ranking was based off a 2017 priority ranking because we had no other rankings since then. So there were some that were not ranked, that today they may be a priority. There was, so that's what you need to consider. That's not something that I wanted to do as an individual of the board. I didn't feel that Steve needed to do it, it needed to come back to the board and decide that the board needs to identify which one's our priority. We have eight months left, so you have to determine which one's our priority to be completed in the eight, in the next eight months.
And so I guess going along with that, so we're not saying that you have to make decisions on these tonight, but we wanted to be responsive to the board's request.
Okay.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Docket.
Page four, bottom. I'm disappointed to see that the, the township has been losing $50,000 a year on the building department operations. And I see it here as a medium risk. It should be a number...
It says high.
High.
It's an H.
High rating.
High rating. It's an H.
What's the green and the yellow?
Well, I'm, I'm colorblind.
Yellow means that...
I'm colorblind.
Oh.
I looked at this...
Yeah, yellow means is that it's been, it's not really meaning that it's at risk, we just haven't done anything for a long time on it.
Where's the last page?
Last page?
Okay.
And red means we haven't done anything on it.
What, what color is that?
Okay.
Which one here? This is red?
This is red?
No, that's yellow.
Well, what is yellow, according to this?
It's a medium.
It says medium risk.
Yeah, yeah, so I'm not sure, so I...
I just mean it's a, it's a medium risk to the township. That's all it means.
Well...
But it's a high priority.
It's a high priority, I know.
To me, to me, it's a number one priority.
Well, it actually was number...
Well, this is all based on documentation that we had, so we put it together.
Yeah, it's number six, actually.
Well, well, you, you went back to 17.
Yes.
We're, we're...
Because nothing has changed since 17.
But now we're, now we can, now we're going to do something.
We're working on it.
And I, I believe that, that it should be a number, I just want to say that, in my opinion, if we're losing the $10,000, or excuse me, $50,000 a year on, on a building department, that should be taken, where else are we losing $50,000? None, none that I can think of. So if we're losing $50,000, let's get with it and get it paid in share.
Can I say something? Our pay?
No. Okay, sorry.
So what do you need us to do to help you with this?
Well, you get, we need to find out, number one. We gave some next steps, what needs to be done, but we need to identify, really, what's the risks to the township? Is it a high risk? Is it a low risk? And what's the priority? Is it a low priority that we get this done? Because lack of time, or is there something in here that has more priority because we can get it done faster?
Okay.
I'd like to thank you very much, ma'am, for being on this committee.
Oh, thank you.
Trying to work on-
Yeah, I think we actually need to assign people to do some of these things.
Same with the manager.
Yeah, we assigned according to grouping instead of individuals because I didn't know who was going to be assigned some of this. Some of this, you know, we have it like North Village Development, we have a building committee. The board and the D-, yeah, North Village Committee, we have the board, the DDA. You know, there's a lot of people that are involved in the North Village Development. It's just not one person.
Okay. I, I would just want to mention about the community centers, parking lot and grounds because it's, it's not rated, but we have the money and at the next board meeting, we're going to have a-
What page is that?
Page two.
Thank you.
So, it talks about landscaping-
Part of this too is not knowing where people are in the process because we don't know.
So, so if I give you the information, then this can be changed to be correct, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Yeah, you can go through this, you don't have to do it, you can go through it manually and write it up and-
Sure, okay.
Put your thoughts on here.
Okay, because at our next meeting, we need to pass a sub-recipient agreement so we can actually get going on that, getting the design for the parking lot and the lights.
That was easy on the process, too.
Yeah, so.
I would like to thank the manager also for working on this. Thank you, sir.
Well, he pulled all the documents together. I did not have all of them.
Okay.
So, I actually wanted to talk about the senior center because one is the radon evaluation, right? That's done. Not only the evaluation, but the fix, correct?
Yeah, the evaluation was done, then the fix was done.
So I think that needs to be documented.
Right now, we're at the stage where they were testing the fix to make sure that was correct.
It says complete, yeah.
Yeah, it says-
That's just the evaluation.
Oh, and fix?
But the installation has been completed.
Yeah, the installation has been completed, so that's-
Cool.
And I did get an email from the supervisor asking about that and just today, and I'll forward something to her and the whole board.
And so, and again, sticking to the community center, like the roof is completed. I think that should be documented. I also think, you know, when are we gonna start the, you know, we started the parking lot, but when do we think that'll get completed? And then the same with the floor, what's the estimated, those are, you know, people are asking about those.
November.
You know, so I just wanna know, people are that.
Yeah.
Then I have another one. I'm just gonna highlight some of my highlights. So if we go to the employee manual, which would be on page five. And so what the employees have been asking is, when are we going to update the PTO and the comp time of our manual? So they, they would like that done.
So we could probably add another line just specifically for PTO.
Yeah, that would be good, because that is where we've been asked about that. I think the last I heard is, we were waiting to calculate the expense to us by changing the PTO policy from a two-year to a one-year accrual.
And we have the data as of January 31st on the employees. So we did not put it on tonight's agenda due to the length of the items.
Okay, cool.
So I plan on having it on the next meeting.
Excellent. I think the employees will be very happy to hear about that. Some of them, the part timers, not necessarily the people that have accumulated more. Maybe they will. They might be able to go on vacation. The other one was just the website. I can't remember what page that was on. And it's just-
It was on the top of five.
Thanks. It's, it's a high priority. It was actually, if you look at our list, it was number two. The building department was actually number six, so, but that can change. So those are my major comments. I have some other ones that I'll just send to you guys.
I have one.
You want one?
Yeah, I-
You got a comment?
I, I think that this should be a number one priority.
Yep, got it.
And we always, and when we get to the end of the meeting, we always like, let's-
Yeah, I like that idea.
So this should be a priority.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
What's he talking about?
We shouldn't, we shouldn't say, oh, let's do that next week.
Right. Goals should be a priority to, and do an update. Good. I agree. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Alright, next is announcements. I just want to mention that the Board of Review, y'all should have received, well, I haven't gotten mine yet either. You got your, okay, tax assessment. I, maybe I'll get mine tomorrow. I don't know. But the opportunity to appeal your taxes is March 10th and March, assessing, sorry. March 10th and March 12th. Yeah, sorry, your SEV and your taxable value. So anyway, that's March 10th and March 12th. And if you'd like an appointment, call the Township Hall and the assessor will put you on a list and you can provide the information to the Board of Review or you can come in. But they'll provide you all the information that you need to actually appeal your assessment. So that's my only, my only announcement. Anyone else have anything, announcement? Ms. Manley?
We're still accepting absentee val-, or absentee applications. So if you're interested and haven't gotten one yet, applications are available online or you can come into the clerk's office and we can get those for you.
Okay. And is that it? Okay. Second call to the public. Now's an opportunity for anybody can come up, please turn it on, hold it up to your mouth and feel free to share your thoughts. You have up to three minutes.
I think you're good, okay. Bob Van Bemelin, 2775 East North Territorial Road. I just wanna make a couple of comments and maybe some suggestions about the town hall meeting that you're talking about or that you approved to, for April the 7th. I think the banner idea is really a good idea. I think, you know, every time somebody drives through town, they see it. I would also put the website, township website on there. I would probably put, and you talked about spending some time talking about the history of this. I would abbreviate that, but I would put that also on the website so people can read that.
If you haven't.
Yeah, and, but make it visible. I mean, gotta make it easy for people, you know? What we wanna do is make this whole process easy. Also, probably the first maybe half hour, you might wanna kind of review it with people there because maybe people coming did not go on the website. I would also, maybe right after the, the history of it, I would put a place for comments that people can make comments or suggestions or questions. If, I don't know how you would assess this, but I think if, if it did bear fruit, I think you're not gonna have enough room in this place here for the people. You might wanna consider having it at the school. You can think about that. I would also have a whiteboard. So as people made comments, you could write it down. I think the goal, at least in my opinion, is to get community involvement in such a way that they feel like they're being taken seriously. When people make a comment and you sit there kinda stone-faced, no, I'm not trying to offend anybody, but they wonder, you know, they really don't care about what I'm saying anyway, but I'm gonna say it, you know? I think if you actually have somebody interacting and saying, "That's a good idea, let's write it down." Or, you know, and then have a scribe and maybe take other information, publish that on the website and say, "These were the comments that people made." And you can, you can comment back to that. And then I, I think as you make decisions or hone things down, you wanna make that, you know, public to the people. To me, the goal for this whole thing here is to get as much public interaction as possible. The more people that come, I mean, you know, where's everybody? They all left, you know? Unless they've got a ax to grind or, you know, they're faithful, you know? I'm trying to come on a regular basis, but I've got other things, so I can't make it to every meeting. But the more people you get to come, the more they make, make comments and they feel you're listening, the more they're willing to support you and, and you'll feel better about what you do. What is my time up?
Yep.
Okay. Anyway, that's enough comments, so. Yeah, okay. And if you have any further questions, you can come see me.
Okay, thank you.
Bob?
Yeah.
Bob Van Bemelin.
Right, thank you.
Jim knows me.
Alright, great, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah. North Territorial, yeah. Anyone else like to come up? Come on up.
The more you guys talk, the more questions I have. Should've stopped about an hour ago. Okay, radon. Are they gonna make kits available like they did over in, well, I wanna say Green Oak, but it's actually in Livingston County? They made kits available, so you could go pick them up. And I asked Tammy to tell you guys, the center, and see if they were gonna be available through, you guys are not.
That's a good idea, thank you.
Okay, we'll go down to five. Trees. Remember Sue said that trees were available through Ann Arbor? If you're talking about trees for your retention pond? I don't, I don't know how tall they are, but she said they were good, good, healthy ones, so.
They're small.
They're small, but are they all pines or are they a combination of pines and hardwoods?
They, they have all kinds, all different sizes.
Okay, well, that might be something because the hardwoods eventually cover everything up.
Right, okay.
Then my next question has to do with the Township Hall money. You're, I understand that in three years, you're supposed to be having the Township Hall paid off. And, and, okay, and in that case, are you thinking of that money that would be available then for some of the other things like the retention pond, if we could put it off a while? I know everybody worries, "Oh, flooding." Well, I live in Horseshoe Lake and I've been dealing with it for nine years. I know about bad because it was right a foot from my back basement at one time. So I was just wondering about that, or future plans where that money would be accessible for the park or whatever else? So I, that, just that thought in mind. On for the sewer, my own writing. Okay, that was the other thing. And this was the main important thing to me, I started out with. Heard you guys talking about what you're gonna do in the next month or so as far as the North Village is concerned. And I still feel a real emphasis on the Synthesis Plan. I don't know if you got a message from the people that were talking that they wanna kind of maybe slow down on the Synthesis Plan and have more emphasis toward what's gonna happen with the park? And again, Sue mentioned that through Ann Arbor, we could get someone that would analyze-
Ten seconds.
The park usage with what we were gonna put there and see how it would coordinate. And if we had a couple of different proposals for what you wanna build and what the park would be, I would like to see that employed into what you're gonna come back with suggestions. That's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else this time? Suggestion? Yep.
My name's still Craig Warburton and I still live on Joy Road. You saw a lot of things, this was a very meaty little gathering tonight. Somewhat entertaining from the cheap seats. The word transparency kicked up at one point and it garnered a fair amount of a pause because that seems to be something that's a cobweb amongst this board. It's hard to listen to what goes on when the supervisor has a chip on her shoulder that says marijuana, knock it off. You gotta stop reacting badly to every suggestion that involves the word marijuana because it's a huge industry. It's gonna be a bigger industry. And thank God, it's gonna be part of our township on a lot of different levels and hopefully on a lot of professional levels. I mentioned it earlier and I'm gonna mention it again and I'm gonna revisit my old FOIA request and see if we can't push that through. Transparency and conflicts of interest in such a small group are just, they're obscene. These meetings are obscene. They, there's no reason they need to be a circus. You know, I sit in here and watch the planning commission and stuff just clicks through. And the last meeting, I barely got my coat off and it was time to go home. These meetings don't run well. You got very direct with people and their performance and it's hard to not get direct back. This township needs a leader. This, this group needs a leader. It seems to have leaders that pop up for varying topics, but unless someone takes a hold of this train and starts pointing it down the right track, it's gonna continue to be a disaster. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Udo Hof 6431 with Molek Road. I was fighting with this idea if I should do it or not, but I think it works so hard on me that I have to do it. Some of you also use the Facebook and I would like to everybody on the Township Board to, to double check if this is good taste, what is being shown and advertised in your name on Facebook and how it affects maybe also people in the township and others. And it should be not promoting violence, hatred and racism. So I would like to ask you kindly to check amongst and I would like to ask if you can also put actions into this to stop this. This is far right frickin' movement. Excuse me when I say it like this, but this is not right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay.
Adam Olney, North Village Township resident. I sat watching at home on this and there was upwards of forty, I think the highest was like fifty-two people streaming it online. Lots of comments, lots of interest. So I, I had to come in person. I couldn't, couldn't sit at home anymore. There's, even though you don't serve beer here, I had to come. First off, I was wondering if there's any new information or issues on the sewer problems that were on Barker Road and my subdivision, Wildwood Lake. I know there was a FOIA request received by the homeowners and it said that there had been no maintenance or no inspections on that line prior to the problem. And, you know, it's the township's responsibility to maintain the lines. The township's responsibility is to maintain them. That means before a problem happens, not just, "Oh, a problem happened, let's go fix it." That's not maintaining them. So the homeowners didn't go back as far as they wanted because you guys are charging them money for this FOIA request. They had to pay, I think, $60 for it. I mean, they already pay a sewer bill. Now they gotta pay thousands of dollars. Like, why should they pay their sewer bill? They're not getting the service that they're paying for. Now onto you, Marlene. You screwed this whole process up. Was there a way to go about removing Sam? Yeah, there probably was. There was probably a way to go about it to get to a public hearing and you screwed it up. You went and got all the information you wanted, ran around behind the back, went and gave him a letter that you don't have the power to do. This is ridiculous. And then you wanna set up there on your high horse, talking about transparency and integrity and like, you're this almighty authority on transparency, transparency and integrity when you've been getting called out on that since the original November 2018 election on marijuana. When we showed up to a meeting the very next week and we already had a letter from our attorney to prohibit it that you requested. You don't run the attorney. We, he, that was brought up in the last meeting with him here. It's ridiculous how you think you are this monarchy of this township. I hope your days are numbered. It's, it's just ridiculous the way you slandered Sam's name here, drug him through the mud and you didn't even have the support. You put it out there like the board's calling a public hearing. No, they weren't. And they showed that when you called the public hearing and it didn't happen. You looked ridiculous and I'm glad there was plenty of people watching online. You fast-tracked this Munger project. You wanted to put it on the agenda tonight. You've had offers on the building that you just put to the back burner. But now, certain people, they like this idea and they wanna fast-track it and give them a sweetheart deal. When you drug your feet because there was marijuana associated with it. That's not integrity, that's not transparency. You have your own agenda and that's all you worry about. Ah, I just can't. You guys, you guys treat this whole township, you treat it like it's your township and it's not.
Thank you, Mr. Olney.
Alright, I'm Marissa President. I live at 32 Shrum Drive. I would like to give some feedback this evening, although I know that in the past, my feedback has been interpreted as disrespectful. I disagree. I do think what is disrespectful is for you to sit here and roll your eyes at people before they even stand up to speak. I think it's disrespectful for you to bring charges against a prominent contributing member of this community without the support of the board. I think that it is disrespectful to cut off other members of the board when they're speaking. And I find it dangerous that you are still operating outside of the bounds of the laws that are, that the bylaws that are written for you. I would actually encourage the board to consider some sort of action to protect yourselves from the supervisor. I feel like there is lawsuit after lawsuit waiting to happen from the sale of 75 Barker to this business with Sam. He could sue. He could sue you guys. And I hope that you realize that. And I think it's your job as the board to take responsibility when things keep happening over and over again. My other feedback is on the meeting. The Q and A, I think that they're great and I think that they're headed in the right direction. I do think some focus groups would be great. If you are going to have focus groups, I think that it is important to provide the public with the base level of information ahead of time where you're talking about, what do we want them to have? What are the objectives of the meetings? Because we all know what happens when everybody gets into a room with varying levels of knowledge about what has already happened. So just providing some sort of base level for those kind of meetings to occur will help them become more productive. The other thing is that if we're going to have a Q and A session, I would love Clerk Manley to see you take a more active role in making sure that there are questions and answers, not basically a bunch of call to the public, which is what I felt like I was listening to tonight, where I would've liked to hear more responses from the board and less from the public during that forum. I get to hear plenty from the public, you know, during the call, which is their time to plead their case. Again, thank you for your service and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing no one, time for board member response to call to the public. To any, Mr. Dockett?
I don't have anything called from response, but I would like to read something. Attention, Tuesday, March 10th, Election Day. I read this last meeting, but now we're getting close, there won't be another meeting before the election. The Wasna County, the Wasna Community College village is on the ballot for $17,500,000 for the first year and $175 million for the next ten years, which would be from 2020- for the next ten years, which would be from twenty twenty-one to twenty thirty. Please think about this, one hundred and seventy-five million when you vote on March tenth, two thousand twenty. Thank you. It's a, it's a rollback on, on Headley. And I can't understand how they should, when there's a law about Headley and they have people, they want us to override Headley. I think it's illegal. Thank you.
Is there all, all of Wasna County?
I don't, I don't know.
Ms. Wheeler had a question.
Ms. Wheeler. Yeah, if you're in the county.
Yeah.
It's all of Wasna County?
Yes.
It's all, it's all Wasna County.
Yeah, it's Wasna County. All of Wasna County. Yeah, don't mean, there's, there's five, how many ballots are there? Three or four different ones here? But it's on every ballot that's in Wasna County.
Is it all of Wasna County?
Is it Wasna Community College Millage? Is that what it is?
It's for Wasna Community College, so it's not.
It's not, I'm not in Wasna Community College, I'm in Oakland Community College.
If you're, if you're in South Lion School District, it would not be on your ballot.
No, I'm in South Lion.
No, so, but if you're not, if, so what Ms. Manley was saying is, you can repeat it, Ms. Manley.
So, if you're in the South Lion School District, like I am, we pay Oakland Community College taxes, so it would not be on my ballot.
That's correct.
Even though I live in the county.
Yeah.
So, it's-
What was this?
We live in, I live in Wasna County.
Yes.
I don't, my, my taxes go towards Oakland Community College, since we're in South Lion School.
And your school taxes go to South Lion.
Exactly.
Yeah, well.
So, not technically everybody.
Well, there's, there's several different ballots. There's a Republican ballot and there's a Democrat ballot.
Do you want to work the election?
On what part of the ballot?
It's on, it's on, it's on the Democrat ballot, too.
Are they posted in the lobby?
I don't know.
The ballots usually get posted in the lobby. But I don't know if they are-
Not in the lobby, they get posted in the, well-
The foyer.
The foyer.
Foyer, yeah, yeah.
I didn't even look.
Okay, Ms. Chick, do you have some?
I have a couple of comments. I think, based on this evening and how the public hearing and everything was handled and the request for Mr. Iaquinto's removal, that this policy, or, I'm sorry, this board should consider, or absolutely should, create a policy that removing an elected or an appointed official needs more than one person to make that charge. We've got to have a better system of doing that so that we don't wind up with one person making the charge, the board, with no board support. There's got to be board support at the point where someone is considering to make a charge against somebody, because you need more minds, maybe an objective opinion that says, "Hey, this probably isn't a good idea, you don't have the evidence," which is my other comment. I strongly dispute the charge that this board does not care about the issue of malfeasance. The evidence that was presented was very weak and flimsy, there was a lot of assumptions, and it just simply did not support the charge. And the process of bringing the charge was questionable at, at the very least. So, there's six of us and one person was presenting the charges. You have to consider the fact that maybe you were incorrect in doing that if six other people don't agree with you, or five.
Okay. Any, Ms. Otto, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I just want to make a statement. There's a quote out there from Potter Stewart that says, "Affect is knowing the difference between you, between what you have the right to do and what is right to do." As leaders, we, there's a measurement that we hold others accountable. We better make sure that we are using that same measurement on ourselves. That's all I have to say.
Okay. Ms. Manley?
Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed that we didn't have the public hearing, because I had many questions on this, still had many unanswered issues going on there that I didn't get to ask either our attorney or Mr. Iaquinto. So, that's why I wanted the public hearing. I mean, clearly, I agree with the First Amendment. I'm going to get accused of impropriety for invoking my First Amendment rights, so I thought that would have been nice to get it all out there and to hear what people had to say. Marissa mentioned lawsuits and that's my fear also. I mean, there's current lawsuits going on right now by marijuana applicants on other townships. I know Peer Roots is suing Warren right now over their process. I'm hoping that that doesn't happen here in our township, and that's always my fear. And, that's it. And thank everybody for coming out.
Can I ask a question? No.
No, after.
No.
I'll talk to you after.
Okay, Ms. Zellner?
So, I do. I, I mean, I kept it because, obviously, but I'm disgusted, I don't even know the adjectives on the call of the public hearing without the full support of the board. It was serious allegations and you needed to at least have four people of the board to do it, and as part of the board, that's all I hear, "The board." "The board did this, the board did that." I don't want to be associated with that. And, I can't, because I'm the board. But we, it needed to be a consensus of four of us to bring that forward, and that was not done. And I, I'm part of the board. I don't know how to make it different. I have been trying to say, "We need policies and we need motions when we make them, we need to follow them," and we don't. And I'm only one person, I can keep bringing it up and bringing it up and bringing it up, and I'm talking to the screen. And it, it's very frustrating. I'm, I'm, but, so, that whole process was extremely not a process and frustrating. It needed to be very procedural, it needed to have buy-in for at least four members of the board to continue. Any positive note, though? I think the question and the answer is, it's a growing. It's growing. I, I, I think it's a good way to bring our community together a little bit on items and hear what other people have to say. We need to make it a little, we need, there's always room for improvement, but we're starting. You got to start somewhere before you can make progress. Little baby steps and then we'll get bigger steps, so I do appreciate everyone that comes and shares their mind and we can talk and that's a good part. I mean, good part of being an elected official is meeting the people and talking to them and hearing what they have to say and implementing it and being part of the, you know, that's here, I'm your voice, so if I don't do well, I prefer you tell me, not necessarily on Facebook, but you can do that. I do have a question and I'm not sure how to, and I'll probably engage Mr. Fink again, is, so now that Mr. Iaquinto is on the board of the, I mean, on the Planning Commission, and there will be discussion about dispensaries and other, what, it would be a good protocol for him in the discussions? Do we have a suggestion? Is that something we should put on an agenda item? Are we okay with, I mean, does he re-
The Planning Commission has its own bylaws.
So, the Planning Commission handles that?
And the Planning Commission should deal with it.
Okay.
And I think the bylaws, when you overlay the statute and the ordinance and the bylaws, I think it's, the process is pretty clear, not totally clear, but enough to give everyone guidance.
Okay, so, we leave it in the plan of the Planning Commissions? Okay, cool? Just wanted to know. So, excellent, thank you. That was my only other thing, so, thanks. Pay your taxes.
Okay.
Okay, if you haven't, pay them.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I was attempting to follow the process as I found it in our, in the state law and I didn't go around trying to get everybody's opinion and selling it to anyone before, I, the process is to have the public hearing so everyone can understand what's going on. And, it's, I, I feel bad that it turned out the way it did, because it would have been good to have it all out there for everyone to, to make their own opinion.
Well, that's your opinion.
Yeah, well, it is. And, so, I do think it's important, though, for Mr. Iaquinto to recuse himself when any of the marijuana establishments are coming before the Planning Commission. And, and he should leave the room. That's what I was taught at MTA training, so.
He sent us a letter saying he would do that.
Well, saying that he recused himself from his own properties. So, anyway, it, it really, it was a hard thing. I didn't take any pleasure in it at all. I wish it would never have happened, but it did. So, anyway, hopefully, we can move on from here in a, in a good way, but as meetings go on, I have less and less confidence that that's going to happen. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Motion by Chalkley, support by Zellner. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed?
One, two, three, four, aye. This is the foyer, the one that was like, we tried to scale it, because, three of us, three of us tried to.
Yeah, we're actually, we're in the drive station. Big house, it's actually two houses. The dress?
No.
The dress?
The dress, yeah.
It's actually two houses that's connected by a front door. So, we're in the west half, Carrie and Joe.
Nice.
Nice to have your engines around, huh?
Yeah.